Okay, good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on June 26, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the June 21, 2024, and has been posted to the municipal website, www.pristin nj.gov. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292 in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and and our, it says our, or is to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tannenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have three resolutions this evening. The first is a a resolution of commendations for Jim Davich, a dedicated zoning board member who has moved out of Princeton, still in the area, but not in the town anymore. Does somebody want, Derek, would you like to read that? Commendation?
Yes, sir. Resolution of commendation and appreciation to James Davich for service to the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Whereas James Davich has served as a member of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment from November 2017 to May 2022, or 24, excuse me, and whereas Mr. Davich has provided exemplary service, contributing his time and knowledge in carrying out his duties to the board, and whereas the board wishes to acknowledge and thank Mr. Davich for his service, now therefore be it resolved that the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment hereby commends and thanks James Davich for his service as a member of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption. And I guess there shall be a a motion in a second.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Claudia, do we do this by individual affirmation? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yeah.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Very nice.
Okay. Our second resolution of the evening is case number Z23-433, Eighth Valley Road Block 7,001 Lot 36 in the R6 T-zone. The resolution was in your packets. If someone, if there are any questions, please ask them. If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
Mr. Cohen, before the board acts on it, there's one clarification that the applicant's counsel has asked for. It's the last sentence of Ms. Rabina's testimony, which is paragraph nine. That's page four. What they would like that sentence to read is, Ms. Rabina further testified that while the setback is 15 feet from the closest point of the proposed home to the property line, the setback to the curb along Mount Lucas Road would be approximately 30 feet. So there was a lot of questioning and testimony, if you recall. I I think that's consistent with her testimony. So that's the revision that they have asked for.
Okay, I do remember that as well. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And so Claudia, would you call the roll?
I don't think you have a motion on the second.
Oh, we don't, that was the motion for the last one. I'm sorry. Okay, would someone like to make a motion on this case?
I'll move. You'll approve.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Nine seconds.
Okay, thank you, George. All right, Claudia, can you call the roll, please? Claudia, you're muted.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
I I can't vote. I wasn't, oh, yeah, I do. I was here for that. That's right. Yeah. Yes, I was here. It's the last week.
A minute, did Mr. Floyd, didn't he vote in favor?
No.
I mean, there were two actions we took. And I opposed one.
No, I think you're thinking, you're thinking of the next one, Michael. The next one had two steps to it.
Now, this one had two steps. He opposed the C.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Got it, got it. You're correct. Okay, all right. I stand corrected.
Do we have to do the next action now?
Well, it's one resolution, so.
I mean, the D variance is the important one. Without that, they can't proceed, right?
Right, correct. But it's I don't, I don't really think it's necessary because we did combine these and it's one resolution covering all of it. So.
Do I, Mr. Floyd? As a yes, or do I get? Karen?
Yeah, sure. I think that's fine.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have one more resolution. Case Z24-431, 850 Great Road Block 3501 Lot. Is that 01? I can't read it. I'm sorry.
1.01, 2.01, 2.11, and 2.12.
Right. Okay, thank you.
If again, a couple of minor or corrections anyway. Just to clarify, the lot numbers are 1.01, 2.01, and then it's not 2.11 and 2.12. It's then it's 11 and 12. So you want to make that correction. Correct the spelling of Ms. Handabode's name. It's supposed to be H-A-D-I-B-O-D-E. Make that correction. The applicant is asked that we make clear, this is during Mr. Ritchie's testimony, he was the second planner that you heard from at the second hearing, that he made reference to what's called the Medici standard. He did, which has to do with the site being particularly suited and positive and negative criteria. They've also asked that we make clear that when the resolution says the applicant can operate the camp this summer, it's the summer of 2024. They've asked that we clarify that the only exterior changes are temporary camp and directional signage. That aside from the reasons that were cited about why they chose the site, meaning that it was already developed as a school, they use as a school, that it was also child-friendly facilities, at least that was their opinion. And then finally, they would ask that, I believe in the resolution, I had the applicant return to the board no later than April. They suggested spring 2025 instead of April 2025. I'm assuming that way, if for some reason they missed the April agenda, they would still be in accordance with the resolution. So those are the, those are the proposed changes to the resolution.
Okay. Are there any questions on the resolution from any of the board members? If not, someone would like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second anyone?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Okay. So our first case this evening is case number Z24-482, 289 Edgerstone Block 82, gosh, Block 8204 Lot 8 in the R21 Zone, R2 T-zone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Derek, can you? Oh, first of all, Claudia, Claudia. Karen, is there, are the notices in order?
No, they're not. And in fact, it's my understanding that this application is going to have to be renoticed. That's correct, Derek, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're going to take that off the agenda tonight. And when the applicant renotices, then we can get it on another agenda.
Okay. All right, moving right along, our next case is going to be Z24-414, 68 Lee Avenue, Lot 8904 Lot 26, or Block 8904 Lot 26. Again, Karen, are the notices in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Mr. Chairman, it's 65. 65 Lee.
I'm sorry. I don't have enough light in here. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Okay, Derek, can you please read your memo?
Derek, I'll just swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Cohen. Hardik and Minal Patel are the owners and applicants of 65 Lee Avenue. It's located in the R9 district in the former township. They are seeking a floor area variance pursuant to NJ SA 40:55D-70D4 and related bulk variances to permit the conversion of a non-compliant two-family structure to a single-family dwelling containing an accessory dwelling unit. There's no record of zoning approval of the existing two-family dwelling. And the existing structure does not comply with the the floor area ratio requirements. The subject property is located in the Witherspoon, is Jackson Historic District and is subject to review by the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission. Property is non-complying with regard to the required 6,500 square foot lot area, the existing's 3,005 square feet. The lot width is non-require, non-conforming, requirement's 40 feet, the existing is 30, and that is the same with the frontage requirement is 40, existing's 30. The existing house is not complying with regard to FAR, the maximum permitted is 54.48 and the existing is 65.49%. Does not comply with the smaller side yard setback of five feet. Existing is 0.7 feet, and it does not comply with the required 15-foot combined side yard setback. The existing is 10.7. And the parking setback requirement is three, and it does not comply, whereas the existing is zero. The applicant is proposing to perform interior alterations to create a plus or minus 750 square foot two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit on the first floor and a three-bedroom.
It's not working.
Hello? Sorry. The applicant is proposing to perform interior alterations to create a plus or minus 750 square foot two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit on the first floor and a three-bedroom 1,200 square foot apartment located on the front portion of the first floor and the entire second floor of the existing dwelling. No changes other than window replacement and removal of some existing window openings are proposed. No sitework is proposed. Some of the existing windows will be replaced and existing openings will be closed. Tax records reflect two kitchens on the property dating back to 1966. There is the note on the property record card of a conversion to a two-family and a rental two-bedroom apartment around the same time. Staff were unable to locate any formal zoning or building department approval. The proposed ADU complies with the size and room count requirements for the ADU ordinance. The plans for the ADU have been revised from the original submission, reducing the habitable number of rooms from three to two. Accessory dwelling units are required to have a parking space when there are three habitable rooms. Revised plan does not require parking space. Section 10B 244L controls the location of accessory dwelling units. Except as set forth here in and in subsection 10B 255C 3H above, a detached accessory dwelling unit shall comply with the bulk requirements pertaining to accessory structures for the zoning district in which it is located, except that in no case shall the distance between a detached accessory dwelling unit and the habitable proportion of a single-family house be less than five feet. The foregoing notwithstanding, ADUs may be constructed on any undersized lot in existence as of July 1, 2020, provided the proposed development complies with all other applicable bulk requirements for the district in which the property is located. The subject lot is non-complying and the existing house does not comply with the floor area ratio. The construction of the AD requires the following variances. The FAR variance is required. The maximum permitted is 54.48. The proposed and existing is 65.49. The bulk variance is required. Smaller side yard setback requirement is five. The existing is 0.7 feet and the combined side yard setback requirement's 15. The existing is 10.7. And the applicant has requested consideration under the C1 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address those. That's that's my memo. And I do note that Elizabeth Kim is here. And the Historic Preservation Commission did issue a memo on this, so if there are not any questions, I will hand off to Elizabeth for her to to talk about the HBC's report.
Elizabeth, please. I do have one question. Derek, you referred to the law that was changed recently and it said something about the bulk requirements. Could you repeat that? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second part of your question.
Could you repeat the sentence or two you gave about the bulk requirements part of the law?
Section 10B-244L controls the location of accessory dwelling units. It says, except as set forth here in and in the subsection 10B 255C 3H above, a detached accessory dwelling unit shall comply with the bulk requirements pertaining to the accessory structure for the zoning district in which it's located, except that in no case shall the distance between the detached accessory dwelling unit and the habitable portion of the principal single-family dwelling be less than five feet. Since the ADU is in the house, I am considering the fact that it is only 0.7 feet away from the property line as a as a variance, even though it's part of the the house. So the the variance is triggered by the conversion to the ADU. That's my.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand why that's an ADU. Why isn't that just an apartment in the existing house?
Because an ADU can be located either within a single-family dwelling or as a detached separate ADU, which would need to be five feet away from the house. And then there's other bulk requirements depending on the size and height of the accessory dwelling unit. So they are permitted to be in a house, but they're still limited to three habitable rooms, 800 square feet or 25% of the floor area of the house, whichever is greater. So they're still permitted. They're just you know, it's not a separate unit on a standalone.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Elizabeth, I just want to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So this application was reviewed by the HBC Chair and myself and because of the minimalist changes to the exterior of the building, which as Mr. Bridger talked about, were some replacement windows which are located in the farther side of the building and because the ADU conversion is not visually impacted from the exterior of the building, we felt found that there was no objection to what the applicant was proposing as far as historic preservation goes. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the that the board may have on this.
Board members, any questions of Ms. Kim? Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Okay. I believe Mr. Kennedy, it is your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could, Claudia, Hardik Patel, the applicant, is an attendee. Could bring him over as a panelist and I'll I'll start my introduction while that's happening. But first, thank you all for hearing us here tonight. I thank Mr. Bridger and Ms. Kim for their input, HBC for their review and approval of this, and Derek is always for setting the stage. One clarification from Derek's memo before we start. While he did, I think, note correctly, the ultimate number of rooms in that, you know, the ADU proposed does not require a parking space. I just want to be clear that the first floor ADU apartment as we go through is actually just one bedroom. So it's two habitable rooms and and one bedroom. We had previously provided some plans and there was some question about what made up the rooms. And just to make it absolutely clear, we removed one of the first floor bedrooms so that the ADU is really just a one-bedroom unit, just to make sure that there was no need to to discuss the parking issue that would be triggered if if another room down there, and it would have been a small one, would have counted as as a room. So they ultimately combined kind of everything into one, you know, efficiency suite, or excuse me, one kind of open living area with one bedroom. Now, with with that, hopefully, this is a rather simple application, one admittedly that's a little complicated by one, the reality of the neighborhoods with severely or even comically undersized lots. What you'll hear tonight is an applicant bought a property as the tax record show that had previously been set up as a two-family on a non-conforming lot. Instead of kind of refreshing those approvals to have what was a top and bottom two-family, the applicant's proposed an otherwise conforming, i.e. smaller, one-bedroom ADU on the first floor. Well, we'll go through and show you that this has had, you know, the two meters for electricity, two meters for water, for sewer. And the tax records just show that this had been treated as multiple units for quite some time, but apparently going back to the 60s, never quite approved. So rather than this being kind of a use variance application and trying to prove, which we never really can fully, that this was a pre-existing non-conforming use, the applicant decided to to convert the first floor into an otherwise conforming, i.e. smaller, ADU unit that triggers or kind of cures, you know, some of the issues that would have perhaps happened with the two-family in that, you know, additional parking spaces needed. And and while this, I think we'll we'll see that history shows this this functioned quite nicely in that two-family configuration, the simplified version that complies with Princeton's ADU rules simplifies it even further. The variances that we're talking about are all things that are there, things that have been there since the property was built. As you will show you, every piece of this building minus the absolute center of it was and always is inside the setbacks. The floor area ratio is not being changed. That's how this house was, has been built for some time. And by altering the use like this, it does kind of require us to re-up those variances for the bulk variances, the setbacks that Mr. Bridger went through. I believe these are your classic C1 hardship. There, I will show you, there's no way to get more land from neighbors. They're all comically undersized for the lot, you know, about half of what this zone requires as well. So there's no relief we could get there. This and and to again, to be clear, as as you you heard from Ms. Kim, there's really nothing externally other than some kind of cleanup, new windows essentially being done on the outside. The envelope is not changing, the size of the building is not changing. In fact, the prior use as a full two-family is being kind of shrunk down so that it's a one-family with an ADU, which we we feel is a little less intense, doesn't require independent parking, for example, for the second first floor unit and and makes for, we hope, a smaller list of of approvals and things for the board to think through. I'd like to, we do have the property owner, a recent purchaser, Mr. Hardik Patel here. If I could ask him to, if he's been moved over. Oh, there we are. Sorry, we have both Patels here. If we could ask that they be sworn in so we can go through our presentation.
Mr. and Mrs. Patel, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So if you could briefly introduce yourselves to the board and give a little bit of your background and and your thinking and what you were hoping to do with this property.
Sure. My name is Hardik Patel and next to me is my wife, Minal, who is a co-applicant. I'm a senior manager in cybersecurity, working for a management consulting firm. And, you know.
Hi, I'm Minal. I'm a physical therapist. I have been working for Morvik Rehab. And I had been working for Morvik Rehab for almost 14-plus years since Morvik was in Princeton. And that's how I think we kind of have a very close connection to the Princeton area.
Just a brief background, I mean, we've been a resident of Princeborough Township, which is the next town over for over 16 years now. And we've always desired to retire in Princeton once our children finish finish their schooling. They are currently 12 and 13 years of age. We purchased 65 Lee Avenue in July of last year with the intention to restore it back to its original state of two-family dwelling. Primarily intentions there were, my mother lives with us and would love for her to take the ground floor, which is the smaller ADU in this shape and form while me and my wife can live on the second floor down the road. But since our purchase, we've certainly, we worked with our architect Dan Fortunado, as well as Ryan, to kind of work through the the process here and then certainly if renovated, most of the interior are proposed to do so while the exterior is pretty much unchanged. So I mean, having said that, Ryan, I think I'll hand it over to you.
All right. Don't don't go far. If you could, we have one set of exhibits I'd like to share and and mark as as A1 this evening. If that's right. So, Hardik, if you could, we're looking to hear, this is the facade of of the home on sixty-five Lee.
Yes, that's the front view.
Now moving on slide two, that blue arrow kind of points to where your property is in the the R-nine zone, formerly a part of the township?
That is correct, yes.
All right, now, zooming in a little closer, that's the property there on on Lee Ave, showing the. Surrounding neighborhood of similarly sized lots.
Yes.
Zooming a little further, you've got your home there as well, again, noting the size of all the lots in this neighborhood, with a few exceptions, are all seem to be this size. Next, Ms. Kim, Solar Thunder, but appreciative of HPC's review and and approval of this project, you know, that the. This this change does not impact things there, so thank you, thank you, her and HPC again for that, so. The Hardik, you you guys purchased this property believing it to be a two-family, can you tell us a little bit more about it, we're going to go through some of the things that you saw and some of the records that that show that, so here, this is the. Tax record and and part of Mr. Bridger's memorandum showing that this had been a two-family going back to the, I guess, the sixties? Is that right? No, and and I'll be careful here, but I know you've talked to some of the the neighbors, that's. I guess, consistent with with what you've kind of found in your own research, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure, Ryan, yeah, so I mean, I spoke with one of the neighbors which shares the property lot with us, sixty-five Lee Avenue, her name is Martha Carter. And I mean, she's been a resident of that property over fifty-five years. And yeah, I mean, she confirmed that this was at some point used by a mother and a daughter, and they had two different kitchens, one kitchen on the. Second floor as well as one, one on the ground, and they had used it as a two-two-family dwelling.
Now, and and as you're working with the architect for the and and renovations, you you kind of found all the the pieces of of the. Kitchens and the plumbing and and those type of things?
Yes. It was on the second floor, however, we are, yeah, I mean, that is now being removed, but yeah.
Now, again, looking, I guess, on on the right, that's a picture of the side of the house, so. You can kind of see it there, but are there there physically, there's separately metered for water, sewer, and gas and utilities, is that is that right?
Yes, that's the electric one you're looking at, but yes, two meters.
So, and then New Jersey American, the water provider, has, when when he bought this, there were two separate accounts and two separate bills and two separate meters?
That's correct, yes.
And I guess the same thing, on the left, this is the, I believe that's the Princeton's. Sewer records for you to pay the sewer bills, so you'll get two separate sewer bills, and I guess there's a note there that it's a compound meter, what does that mean, that 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 it's a. One meter that supports two separate accounts?
Accounts, yes, but it it goes through most of my mortgage applications, so I don't get specific bills, but yeah, you have it right there.
They take care, they take your money and take care of that for you?
Yes.
So is there anything that you've seen in buying this or doing research that would show that it that it wasn't a two-family, I think, that sounds kind of silly question, but.
No, I mean, in fact, we are showing the electric meters, we had similarly gas meters as well. For this property, it was on the other side, but again, similar picture, it was in the basement, we had two different gas meters. Certainly two unique bills for that as well, but yeah, PSENG has basically four meters on premises.
So let's just kind of talk through, I know sometimes the board is not that interested in what happens inside a building, but here it's particularly kind of relevant, just to show. What the, how the two floors are are proposed to be configured and and broken up to allow for the. ADU in the second floor, so on the right here, I guess that's the front door, the front door would go to the main. The main primary home, is that correct, the the green arrow? And so on the first floor, that front living room area and steps, that's part of the upstairs main. Unit?
Yes, that's right.
That blue arrow, I guess, both on left and right, that's that side door that's been there for the second, is that right?
Yes, that's existing, but yeah, that opens up into the kitchen of the smaller unit, which is the ADU now.
Just noting that for everyone that, you know, to comply for an ADU, the the door of the ADU, whether it's an accessory building, separate or inside the main home, has to. Face differently, it can't face the street, so as I said, always been set up that way as well, which was kind of perfect to kind of recast the the second unit as an ADU. Next, again, we've got the, these are the up and downstairs floor plan that architects propose, so. I guess, on the the orange outline, on the left is the first floor, and the right is the second floor, took me a while to get this, was that that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And so the first floor, and this is, I guess, that clarification that we had from Mr. Bridger's original report, but. On the left, you entering in the ADU entrance, you've got the kitchen, and and by the way, Hardik, was that, I guess that's where a kitchen had really always been?
Yes, that is the place for the ground floor kitchen, that's right.
And then behind that, a combined living dining area, which counts as a room, and then a small bedroom in the back, that would be the the second habitable room. All right, and then. Again, upstairs, this kitchen area, anything new about that, that's where, I guess, the kitchen has always been from your investigation?
Well, it was, in fact, in the back, right behind the bathroom, but yeah, I mean, right now, we are proposing it to bring it right above the kitchen downstairs.
Got it, okay, so when this, in this prior two-family configuration, the second kitchen was in this back area, actually?
Yes.
And just another note that. For the ADU, the the first floor, you know, rather than being a full. Unit for a two-family with two outer rooms does not require its own parking space. Next, Hardik, I mean, often at this point of an application, I'd be asking if you ask your neighbors if they wanted to sell you any land, but in this case. Fortunately or unfortunately for you and for them. You're the blue lot, right, and the red lots are ones that are also non-conforming, and unfortunately or fortunately. You know, couldn't offer, couldn't sell you any lands to to cure the undersized lot situation that this lot and, you know, all of the, almost all of them in your neighborhood. Have, I'll also note, on the left. This red box, you can see the outline of the existing home, and this red box here is the. Actual part of the lot that complies with the setbacks, and the home has been in this location likely since it, obviously, since it was constructed. Predating things, but there's almost no way to build a lot, and certainly the existing structure, which is not being proposed to be altered from any kind of external way. Other than the window replacements. Unfortunately, can't comply and has never been able to with those setbacks. I think, I guess, in 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 summary, here's our our bulk table, as Mr. Bridger went through, all of the existing variances that are. I'll use the word refresh, but ultimately need to be re-granted here on a on a C-one, or again, for the floor area. Basis because of this recasting. These are all existing conditions, they are unchanged by his proposal, we're not, we don't have the ability to 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 move the walls, we're not proposing to change. The size or 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 scale or bulk of the building in any way, and these are the existing conditions. I'll also note that while you you hear many cases of perhaps changes to undersized lots and existing conditions or expansions. This one's a little unique in that this previously was a two-family, we hope that we, you know, perhaps not shown enough to 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 claim, and we didn't even. Complete it this way or or apply this way, that show a non-conforming use, that's really hard to show that, you know, from prior zoning, that that it's always been that way. Without abandonment for the course of fifty, sixty years. Admittedly, we obviously don't have that information, but we do have information showing that it has been in a two-family configuration going back to nineteen sixty-five. With lots of modern evidence that the town has essentially granted or acknowledged, but whether it's the sewer. Water or utility items showing that it was configured that way, and 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 showing uniquely that perhaps other. Undersized lot conversions, for example, that this. This property, having previously been a two-family, can accommodate. The ADU use, which is almost the same as a two-family, just less intense, less bedrooms, not, no need under the parking, under the ordinance, for example. To accommodate parking, other than what is what is required, the two spaces for for the main unit. With that, we tried to keep this one simple, obviously, we're available to answer any questions. I'm happy after, if there are any questions, to summarize again, you know, our. Understanding of the existing variances, and I'll remind you, technically, since this property has already been. Non-conforming for floor area, I don't want to lose the fact that there is technically. A recasting or a refreshing of that floor area variance, we're not looking to expand, this this building is not getting bigger. But even just in the existing state, by this conversion, it requires us to look at the floor area variance, which I think technically means. We do need five of you to to hopefully follow along with us this evening, rather than just the majority for the the bulk variance, it's not withstanding, and these all being. Pre-existing issues, so that, again, happy to to answer any questions that anyone on the board has this evening.
Mr. Kennedy, you would like this as exhibit A1, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you.
Can you take your screen down there, Mr. Kennedy? Thank you. So, board members, are there any questions of the applicant or the attorney?
I have two questions, Michael, go ahead.
Go right ahead, Steve.
Okay, two quick questions, one is, and I I just don't understand. What would be in it, but what does the title say that this property is? I mean, I I'm not questioning for a minute what you told us, I'm just wondering what the title might say.
So I think I can, I can speak to that, I don't mean to testify, but I've looked at the deed. In this type of situation, if someone hadn't, in this case, no one did. Sold the unit separately by creating a condominium, the deed looks the same as to any single-family house or any apartment building, essentially, it's just one deed. Without reference to how many units were there, and I would say that's not uncommon. Only if someone would have gone through the effort to condominiumize the two units into two sellable units, would the deed look any different.
Okay, thank you, the second question is, what's advantage to doing an ADU? Why are you doing that instead of just?
Well, the hope was this, this is more compliant, and then honest, that one of the the big issues, even in just refreshing the existing. Variances, is that a two-family, even though this was. I I'm not going to use the word grandfather, because I don't think that's correct, we don't have the proofs to show this continues to use as a two-family. But two families have different parking requirements, whereas the smaller ADU with only bedroom, one bedroom, does not require that, and. Even if we would have gotten that extra variance or or convinced the board frankly that that. A two- or three-bedroom first-floor unit and a two- or three-bedroom second-floor unit, as it was likely configured in the past. We would need to figure out parking, even if it wasn't something that the board was concerned with, and I think it would be. We with with this existing configuration and driveway, we would, from a practical standpoint. Forgetting the variances, need to understand how we would share that parking, and and, you know, the the Princeton rule is. I I probably have other clients are going to be mad at me by saying this, it's probably a good one generally, that stacked parking. Works if those spaces are just for one house or one unit, and when you have stacked parking with either an ADU required to have a space or a two-family. It's a different analysis, and as far as what their use for this, you know, in the future with the family member, or if it's rented before then. They can control, and that bottom unit can't have a parking spot, and they don't have to deal with that, and we, if we did have two, a true up-and-down two-family. We would need to deal with that, we would need to figure out how to park it and 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 justify that to you guys, and I'm not saying we couldn't, but this made more sense.
Why not do this just as a one-one family unit with a. Waiting for a mother-in-law? Or a.
Well, technically. One could do that until. You add any kind of, and I I don't want to speak for Derek on where his line is drawn, but ultimately, as things approach a kitchen. It would require either the use variance for the for the two-family or to be an ADU, and I I think there's probably a lot of people hiding. In law suites with a pretend-not kitchen, that's that's not what we were looking to do.
Okay, thank you. And my my question, just want to confirm, so. The Patels, you you plan to move into this house, is that correct?
Yes, that is our plan, it's five years, seven years down the road, because our kids are right now in middle school and high school, but once they finish off, that's our intention, yes.
So it's a. Obviously, it's going to be two rental units that you will manage?
Yes, I think you said two rental units, what was the latter half of your question?
And who who will manage the property?
Oh, I'll be managing it myself, yeah.
And just one, just comment, and it's not of importance, really. In tracking the history of sale on this property, I did see that you're also a real estate agent, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, I'm a real estate agent for the last four years. Two thousand is when I. But again, that's something I'm passionate about, I do it, but I'm a senior manager, as I said earlier. That's that's my primary focus, but that's my side hustle, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't affect this case, but, you know, you could, you could sell this property, you could, you could sell both of them. And. We all, yeah.
No intentions to do that, though.
Just since we're, we're, you know, we started off talking about you. You know. I was definitely worried, you know, concerned about how soon you move, then. Well, it's like seven years, it's a rental property for seven years, two rental properties. Thanks.
Thanks, Michael. Any other questions on the board? Yes, please.
It's your Mrs. Patel, when did you purchase the property?
July of last year, July of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
And I, one other question, if I could.
Sure.
I know. When we carried this from the last time. You mentioned that you had met with some of the neighbors, Mr. Kennedy mentioned, and they're they're fine with this, now you did mention one neighbor tonight. Did you meet with more than one neighbor?
We have met, we have met. Well, no, we have, I mean, I have personally not, of course, we have sent out letters from from our office, but I think. Martha is whom I've spoken to, she's right next door, and she's actually the one who's sharing, not sharing, but she's the one right adjacent to my parking lot, so I think it made logical sense to talk to her. But yeah, I mean, I've certainly spoken to her, but not not any other.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to get clarification, because I believe it was said, some of the neighbors, but it doesn't matter one way or the other, either. They'll comment or they won't comment tonight, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll we'll open this up to the public, but first, Mr. Kennedy, do you want to sum up?
I'll just thank you all again, you know, this. You see many pre-existing non-conforming uses, may pre-existing non-conforming lots, there's not a lot what can be done to remedy that, this is in many respects your classic. C-one case with the additional. Flavor, as I think also many, if not all of the lots in this neighborhood are. Is that they're already above even the proportional floor area, because this is, this lot is less than half of the sixty-five hundred square feet that is required. There's not a particular requirement that it shows that it's well-suited. For for the the use and the intensity, but the site. Can accommodate it, because it it has accommodated the floor area for likely the last sixty years, and the same goes with your your kind of classic hardship. Variance, it's been like this, there's nothing that the applicants can really do to to change that or or to move or rebuild, even. If they were to tear this down and rebuild it, there's almost no place on this lot that a compliant building could be built, so the uniqueness of this case. Is the undersized nature, which is a little less unique in this neighborhood, but the the evidence of its use as a as a prior two-family, and that the ADU. Is actually less intense. intense, fewer bedrooms, and and less parking requirements than a full two-family was were to otherwise be. So with that, again, thank you all for for hearing us tonight and much appreciated your time.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia, I'm going to open the hearing up to the public now. Claudia, do we have anyone who's indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
Yes, one second.
But I might. Are we unmuted?
No, you're unmuted.
Hello?
Say hello. Joseph. Joseph is great.
No, you go.
I'm afraid we can't see you. Can you can you turn on your video?
You can't turn on your video. There's no option. Will join us panelists.
Hello?
Hey.
Um, yes, good evening. My name is.
Oh, here we go. Ms. Nelson, if you're comfortable, would you let us have your address, please?
Yes, I'm actually at sixty-nine Lee. My name is Cheryl Whitney, and I came across the street because I'm having computer issues, but I'm actually two doors over from the property you're discussing. And I would love to be heard, so.
That's no problem. If you would just, we'll just swear you in. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I am, as I said, at sixty-nine Lee, which is two doors from the property in question. And I've been listening to all the testimony, and I understand that many of the buildings in this neighborhood have when you purchase them, they are not necessarily in compliance. And as a person who has renovated my home from two fires and done in addition with my neighbor, Joseph Weiss, who's an architect, I'm pretty conversant with all the things that need to be considered. The thing that concerns me, there are two things that concern me, actually, three. One is the characterization in a town that's, you know, crowing about its sustainability that these lots are comically small. I think I heard the word comically three times. If, you know, there are a lot of people who live on this street, they pick this street because they can live within their means and they don't need a McMansion. We're close to town, and we actually appreciate our comically small lots. That said, we live cheek by jowl, and our quality of life is very important to us. So when you have a rental, which this is at this point, with, I think, three college boys who have parties at night and an open fire pit and make all kinds of noise, you're changing the character of the neighborhood. That's one. Number two is parking on this street in this block of Lee Avenue is very dense. We have the nursery school. We have two restaurants at the corner of Lee and John. And so if there is an ordinance that says that there should be three parking spaces, then there should be three. You called it stacked for two, you know, stacked parking for two. You need that third space. And so I would like to see that part of the ordinance upheld. I did say there were three things. I think the comically, the rental and the parking are my three objections to some of the things that were said here tonight. Thank you for hearing me out.
You're welcome. Okay. Claudia, can you allow the next person to speak?
We have somebody named Carrie and Mr. Weiss.
Pick one. Both people need to make themselves visible, I guess.
Uh, can you hear me? I I I'm on.
Hear you, Mr. Weiss. We can't see you, though. Can you?
Okay, I think you need to again promote me to a, oh, there we go. I got it, actually. There we go.
Thank you.
Well, I thought I had.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, hi.
Mr. Weiss, if you're comfortable, could you give us your address, please?
Certainly. Joseph Weiss, seventy Lee Avenue.
Alrighty, and you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
I so do.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. And thank you to the zoning board for all your work. I think first, as a matter of record, I've lived across sixty-five Lee for thirty-two years now, and it's always been a single-family home during I've only, it's only been known to me as a single-family home. We've known the people who have lived there. The second thing, if you look at Zillow, you do a Zillow search, there's no mention of it being a single-family home. I'm sorry, a two-family home. It's 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 presented as a a single-family home. I don't, I don't know that that's significant, but I I think it's important to kind of clarify the background background of this property. The, to that point as well, approximately a year ago, I don't know the exact dates, that there was a fair amount of renovation going on of this property. I would, I know I'm not allowed to ask the applicant questions, but I'm curious, were they responsible for those renovations? I never saw a permit displayed. I have no idea if it was inspected. If permits were filed, but it was pretty significant. There were many dumpsters. There was a lot of demolition. There were, it involved all the building trades, building reconstruction, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, all those trades were present. I have no idea what was exactly going on inside. But as I said, I, this was occurring for a fairly lengthy period of time over the last year, and I never saw a permit. So I think it's really important that 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 issue be resolved, especially in this neighborhood where, you know, any degradation or noncompliance of building life safety standards really has particularly disastrous consequences because as my neighbor mentioned, we are cheek by jowl. And, you know, it's, if one house goes up, a lot of houses will go up. My, really, my main concern about this is that Lee Avenue and the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood historic district is already one of the densest neighborhoods in town. And really, this this application is creating two units out of one. And I know the town has been pushing accessory dwelling units, and I'm not against accessory dwelling units per se, but it does have unintended consequences. And this is where I would ask the zoning board to really step back and consider the bigger picture here. And that is that, you know, if you if you allow any property in our neighborhood, and most of the properties are noncompliant, to be split up into ADUs, you're effectively doubling the density at some point in our neighborhood. And I think that could have very serious long-term implications for our neighborhood. And I think it would, in my opinion, degrade the quality of our neighborhood, which I have lived in for a long time, and I I really I love living here, but I would hate to see a change in this manner. I think we, there's no, to my understanding, there's no hardship that's been presented here of why this should be allowed to be converted to a a home and then an ADU, which the, and I believe I understand correctly that the the units could then be sold individually as two separate units. And that, I think that prospect will send a signal to other investors who will come into the neighborhood and and see an opportunity to convert any home into basically two units. And you know, that that carries with it a pretty strong profit incentive. And I think I think that in the in the bigger picture, if that's allowed, if it's allowed to happen in this instance, it's going to send that signal. And my concern is that it will drastically change our neighborhood. And I therefore urge that you reject this application. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Claudia, you have anyone else who would like to speak?
Carrie? Somebody named Carrie?
Yes, it's Carrie and Andrew. We live at sixty-four Lee Avenue across the street.
Sir, we can't, we can't see you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Need to get your video on.
Hold on, I'm working on it. I'm right here.
Okay, and could we have your full name, sir?
Andrew Skey, S K E Y, and Carrie Eastman.
Alrighty, and if you're comfortable, can you give us your address?
Sixty-four Lee Avenue.
Alrighty. And are you both going to testify or just you?
No. Carrie, you want to join? No, we're good. I I we we agree on this, so I'll.
Okay, so do you swear or affirm? Any, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh, we stand behind Joe Weiss. We we our our sentiments are exactly in this particular case and Cheryl. We agree. So I I put in, I I raised my hand before they had spoken. They said exactly what we would have said, so it would be wasting people's time if we repeat.
Okay, is that is that all you, is all you'd like to say? All right, thank you.
We even thought we had content before it was presented. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Claudia, has anyone else indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no more hands.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to respond or you and your client to the?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, first, several questions from Mr. Weiss. When, not to say that you were sold a bill of goods necessarily, but but when when the MLS listing for when you purchased the property, what did it list it as a two-family?
It had a mention that this was originally a two family dwelling unit, and it can be restored back. It was in the MLS listing itself.
And that was consistent with what you looked in the tax records and
and to everywhere, yes.
And the the multiple utility meters and bills and things you looked at?
That's right.
And next, yes, to be absolutely clear, I think you started some of the interior renovations and exterior, actually, already, hoping that this approval would allow the conversion of one kitchen essentially. But did you do all of those with HPC and construction and and full municipal approval at every step?
Yes, we had everything per code and by permit. The only HDU unit application is what we are dealing with separately, but everything else that was renovated interior-wise is per code.
I think that includes another administrative waiver separately from HPC for the air conditioning units, I think.
Yes, that is correct.
A couple other things, and 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 I just want to, I'll say, apologize to, I believe, Ms. Ms. Nelson. When I describe lots as comically, and I'll use for the fourth time tonight, unfortunately, undersized, I mean only with respect to the zoning requirements, not that they are not appropriate sizes for this neighborhood. In fact, they are. They dictate what this neighborhood should be. It is the comparison of the sixty-five hundred square foot requirement in a neighborhood where almost all of the lots are three thousand square feet. So with apologies for my inartful disconnect between the zoning rules, I I I want to be clear that we believe, as 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 you do, that these lots absolutely are the right size for this neighborhood. And because of that, there's not much one can do with them other than to keep what is there, whether it's the location of the building, the floor area that it exists. And and otherwise. Second, I also want to be clear, I suppose, that, you know, one of the reasons we weren't here last month is to make it absolutely clear that we wanted to comply with the town's ordinance on the number of parking spaces. So as as one of the designs that we initially proposed had another bedroom, and while you can have three habitable rooms, there's lots of ADUs that have been created that that comply and have two bedrooms. And if you have a kitchen there, you could still still be two habitable rooms. We didn't, there's a a middle room here, and we wanted to be absolutely clear, and and we removed the bedroom essentially to one hundred percent comply with the municipality's parking requirements. We're not asking for relief from a parking ordinance. In this case, for what we've proposed, two spaces are required, and two spaces are on the site. So wanted to be clear was that as well. Also, that the the Princeton's ordinance here, this board traditionally has been, you know, agnostic on condominium versus rental. This is one where, when the applicant's kids are done with high school, they would like to live here themselves, even that case they there's a chance they'd still be renting one of the units then, too. That's the idea behind the ADU ordinance, you know. Everyone willing that the in-laws are still at the time, you know, ready to move in, but if that doesn't work work out perhaps in 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 one way or the other, that it's likely that the owner would be renting one of the units. That's the idea kind of behind the ADU ordinance. Is it? Is it possible that someone could condominiumize this? Yes. Does the town have a say in that? No. Is is the intention of this applicant to do that? No, it's it's a quite small, you you see that more often, frankly, in large ADUs or ADUs that almost approximate freestanding houses, and those are condominiumized, they've been sold separately. Is it possible to do that for a very small, one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit? Technically, yes. That's not this applicant applicant's intention and not a likely a popular item in the in the market right now for some someone to do in the future. So I I hope we've addressed the the comments that we that we received. Ultimately, I want to make sure that, you know, to 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 focus the board on the ultimate hardship variance is a function of the lot size. What's unique to that lot here? The lot is undersized, you know, the the zoning is a very broad brush and painted this neighborhood with requirements that almost no properties meet. As a result, even doing compliant things, like a one-bedroom ADU, require these these variances to be to be looked at. And here, we believe quite strongly and and hope that the the testimony that you agree with, that this provides what Princeton is is ultimately looking for. This is an opportunity for a living in scale with this neighborhood in a way that we believe is not impactful and on a property that has previously supported a more intense, a full two-family use. Every case you hear needs to stand on its own merits. But if you are thinking about precedent, know that this is a property with a history and of prior two-family use. That is not the case with every property. This is not a door opening to every undersized property getting an ADU. Is that what the ordinance looks for? You know, it's it's not far off from that, to to be honest, but that's that's not what's being asked here. That's perhaps for the 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 governing body. But again, we showed the history of prior use. But again, we showed the history of prior use approved kind of up and down, shown in the tax records as a two-family, still getting two bills from every utility, including including Princeton. That makes it unique almost in its showing of its ability to support this use because it was this in a way that is more intense than the small one-bedroom ADU that it's to be converted to. Again, so thankful for your time tonight, also thankful that apologies to the first applicant and the notice issue, I'm glad that we're here a little earlier than we otherwise would be discussing this. But thank you again for your time and and thought of this, thoughts on this application. And of course, ready and and able to answer any other questions you might have. Thank you.
Board members, before we go into executive session, do you have any questions of the applicant? Or the attorney?
Yes, Donna.
For the applicants or the attorney, how is the property being used now?
I'm sorry, Donna, could you repeat the question?
Sure, how is the property being used right now?
Got it. So Donna, right now, it has been renovated and it's been rented out as a single-family unit.
Okay, and is the neighbor who testified correct that it's being rented to three college students?
Yes, Martha is very well aware. Yep. Yeah, in fact, I went and introduced these these students. These are Princeton students, they are part of the rowing rowing team. I've gone through their background check very well, you know. I think I've already introduced them to Martha, who is our next-door neighbor, and at least got that introduction going. Yep, I did that when they started off and they started off in May, the last month.
Yeah, I I just would hope that now that you've heard a complaint from the neighbor as the landlord and owner, you could address the complaint because as she said, it's a very, it's a very tight situation in there. And I I think it's very legitimate what she was concerned about. And you know, if if there's a lease, maybe they're in breach of their lease.
I'll I'll make sure that that has been looked at for sure. I'm taking notes here, so Donna noted. It will get addressed, yes.
Thank you, Donna. Any other questions of the applicant or the attorney? Okay, all right, so let's go into executive session and discuss this amongst ourselves here. Comments from the board? Michael?
You're muted, Michael.
I just wanted to start with a to repute, you know, reboot some some things that Mr. Kennedy said, at least from my opinion. Yes, the lots are oversized, but the applicant never says the building is oversized for the lot. I've said that before. When I look back, if this was a vacant lot, would I vote for something, a house this size on that lot? And the answer is no, it would be smaller. We are taking, I realize a house that's there, it's reality, I do understand that. It's significantly over the far. You also mentioned, and I'm 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 kinda saying this for everybody, not, I'm not doing one-on-one with Mr. Kennedy, that the town, that we're we are agnostic regarding rentals. You're speaking to a board that voted against condominiumization on a Lee Avenue property. And if if you may be aware of that. So that's that's not being agnostic. We were actually against it because the old idea of the granny flat and a rental property that helps support the prime owner of the building was something we stood behind. Now, down the road, that got overruled. But you're speaking to a board that wasn't agnostic about it. Also, you said it's it's compliant with what the town is looking for, is what was said to the board. And I think this, we've run into this with a few ADUs. And even the planning board is, yes, to deal with the Ewing Avenue properties. And they're, they were really looking to crunch down on the number of variances. Anything over code, so the town seems to be looking for something that is compliant and can still be an ADU. That's that's my read and I'm saying that to everybody on this call. And that's all I have to say right now.
Any other comments? Questions?
If we turn this down, does it revert to a one-family all-in?
I'll just note, it it's it's being used as a one-family now. The 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 request is to allow the ADUs to could be revised and the kitchen added back in.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
The current use with the the tenant that's in there now, or the group of tenants, is essentially as a one-family. So I don't know if it would revert, it would just remain the status quo.
So there is one kitchen now.
All right, can you can you confirm that? But yes. You're muted.
There is one kitchen, yeah, that's right.
Very thank you.
So just to clarify, it was, it's 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 metered separately, but we don't know when the last time that there were actually two kitchens in there. We we don't know when that was.
Harik, have you been able to ascertain that from, you know, from your investigations?
I mean, what we've, again, talking to Martha fifty-five years back in time, at some point it was. And then based on the meters and the readings that we've looked at, evidence of all two bills for whatnot. And that's what I looked at when I was purchasing the property. So that is what I have to go by. I don't have evidence of whether it was from this date to this date as a two two-property or so-called two-kitchen or two-dwelling unit. However, the seller, when they sold it to me in the MLS listing, it said clearly this was originally a two-dwelling unit. And it can be brought back to its original, you know, shape and form. And that's hence the investigation of all the two two-meters as well as the the zoning reviews and whatnot. So, yep. Hope I'm answering your question, just don't worry. I don't have the exact timeframe if that's what you're looking for.
But when you inspected the house before you bought it, was it a one-family or a two-family house?
I'm, it was one kitchen, but the meters and all that was separate. And the listing was stating that it has originally been a two, yep. It was not a two-family, not a two-kitchen, if that's what you're.
Sir, do you receive two bills in the mail every month from the utilities?
Yes. Two bills for electric, two bills for gas, two bills for water. And so I think it goes through the mortgage, so I don't have visibility. But I think based on the sword bill from Princeton, yes.
And both bills are actually amounts?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes. It's level one, level two, yes. It clearly indicates that these are two different floors, two different units, two different dwelling units, so they could.
Okay, first first floor, first floor bill, second floor bill, got it.
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
How many bedrooms are there now in the unit?
Right now, so the design stipulates, we have four, yeah, three bedrooms upstairs and there's one downstairs. So with the ADU, it's gonna be one-bedroom ADU. And the the primary unit would have three bedrooms upstairs and one living room downstairs, yeah.
As it's rented now, though, to the college folks, is it with those same four bedrooms? I mean, how, what what is, what are they using it for now?
Yeah, so you would just add them up, three plus one and one, so five bedroom right now, the way it shifts. But it's used as, yeah, they could use the living room as as a bedroom per se, but yeah, yep.
So just to clarify, though, your proposal with the ADU actually removes a bedroom, the four total bedrooms.
Yes.
And what we're asking for currently, there's, it's a five-bedroom house.
Yes.
Aaron, I have a question of you. As of right, putting aside the bulk variances, setbacks and everything else, they can put an ADU in this residence, right?
Steve, you can't say as of right if they need variances. So as of right is, I have a single-family home. It's always been a single-family home and the zoning is for a single-family home. I have a single-family use as of right. The ADU ordinance, as quoted in Derek's memo, although it allows an ADU to be constructed on an undersized lot in existence as of July one, twenty twenty, the ordinance says the ADU needs to comply with all the other applicable bulk requirements. So this, what you're dealing with here is you have existing non-conformities. The house is old. I believe one of the exhibit slides indicated nineteen twenty is when it was built. So I think it's difficult to to claim or 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 argue that this is what the ordinance calls for. Doesn't mean you can't give it variances. You, the applicant is presenting their argument as to why they feel they should be allowed to use this for two accessory dwelling units. But I don't think you can say that they have the use as of right to do.
Well, when I said as of right, I meant the ordinance allows for on a lot of this size, an ADU. Obviously, there are other criteria that have to be met, but you can put an ADU on a single-family lot.
Yes, if you comply with all the other.
Comply with all the other.
Right.
Okay.
So another question then, are we, if if we voted against this, are we basically saying that for that neighborhood where we know that most of them don't comply with the 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 lot size? That none of them can have ADUs? I mean, was, if it it seems like that should have been, there there should have been something in the ordinance that addressed these cases, if if that's enough to exclude.
Well, I I suppose, Bernice, another way to look at this is that the ordinance says specifically, you can build on an undersized lot, but you have to comply with all the other bulk requirements in that zone. So the idea is that it's not the lot area that will stop you under the municipal ordinance, but there are other standards as well as with any dwelling. So if someone says, yeah, I know my lot is undersized, but you know, I'm able to comply with all the other requirements. I'm doing that. You hear that from applicants. They tell you, yes, but my house will comply with everything. I'll comply with the setbacks, I'll comply with the floor area ratio, I'll do all that. I just can't change the size of my lot. So there's two ways to look at this, I think. The applicant's argument is, well, it's existing, it's undersized, and that's driving all these other bulk variances they need. That if they had a bigger lot, then they would need all these. And that, yes, all the lots in that neighborhood are all undersized. But the the flip side of this is that you're assessing whether the case has been made not to use it as a single-family home, which is what it's being used for, but to change that use now to a home and an ADU. There's been references to prior two-family use. I I I think the applicant has acknowledged it's very difficult to indicate when was it two-family? When did that stop being two-family? You've heard the applicant tell you, well, my neighbor says it was a two-family for a long time. You've heard the other neighbor who lives across the street who says, I've lived here for years, it was not used as a two-family. So I think rather than perhaps focusing on that, it might be more helpful for the board to focus on whether you feel that the case has been made for these bulk variances to allow the ADU. I think, Michael, you?
Yeah, if I could, and it's directly to Bernice's question. And first, let me say all the lots in the neighborhood are not undersized. There are lots that could comply and could handle ADUs, I believe. They're not all undersized, believe me. But going back on this point to when the planning board was discussing this, and I spoke at the planning board and mentioned that the undersized lots that are in the neighborhood, it's questionable whether you wanna burden them with ADUs. And David, I will quote his name, David Cohen, on the planning board said, well, there's not really that many lots in the neighborhood that can handle an ADU. And who else? Who's the president of council now? Mia chimed in. Yeah, it won't be that much of an impact and basically said, David, what's the estimate of number of lots? And David said, maybe ten. So from that discussion, and I'm not saying that's law, is they were looking at or hoping that ADUs, applicants would wanna put ADUs on lots that can handle the ADUs. And that's, that's somewhere on record on video. But that is absolutely accurate of what our exchanges were. But you'll have to go look at it, Mr. Kennedy. I see you don't believe it.
Well, apologies, it's not that I don't believe it, I just, I I I'm I'm not sure the an exchange with a different board, granted, members of the governing body, I I I'm I I guess is the your point that the governing bodies, I guess, were expressing the intent of the ordinance through that exchange? Is that the, is that the thinking, Mr. White?
No, I'm just expressing what was said. Cause, and I I actually would say, I think it's a learning process. And we, I've I've said this in public too, at at our last one. The town is, seems to now look much harder at ADUs and variances than they did a year ago. And I think you're lawyer for, yeah, some applicants. You may agree with that, you may not. I'm just, I'm not saying with the town anything different than what the ordinance says, and Karen read to the ordinance. But, yeah, I'm responding to her question and, you know, that's why we're here and ultimately will take the vote.
Well, I mean, in terms of what, you know, what may have been said at the planning board when this was, I guess, came before them for a review of consistency with the master plan, I don't, I don't know that that's an area tonight that's gonna be binding or that the board can rely on. I, I think it may be that what's troubling the board is that unlike a situation in which someone says, I'm going to have a single family home and I'm going to have, I would like a very little unit for my mom to live in or my dad, which I guess may have been what previous ordinance has contemplated, that it would be for parents or your child. In this situation, the accessory dwelling units, uh, a lot of questions were asked of the applicant, what do you plan to do with it? Which that's up to the applicant, what they plan to do with it, whether they're going to live in it or rent it or whatever. But the point is that as an accessory dwelling unit, it has the ability to be now turned into condominiums, which again, the form of ownership is not something that the town ordinances have addressed.
I'm not disputing that, Karen.
No, 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 no. Well, what I'm saying is that.
Past that condominiums are le, are legal. And I said that. Yeah, and if, if the applicant's attorney can imply in his statements what the town wants. I can make statements.
True.
Interpretation. We, we've heard a number of things that he said, well, the town, you know, is, is agnostic to rentals. The town is, 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 this is something that the town is looking for. If he can say things like that, I can.
Remember with any variance, you're balancing the positive and the negative criteria. You look at what is going to be promoted. In this case, the argument is, it's a C one hardship. It's un, undue burden on the applicant if you deny these variances because the lot is small. And, uh, but then the flip side is, all right, so is there any negative impact? Does it negatively impact the zoning ordinance? Does it negatively impact the surrounding properties? So just like any variance application, those are the things you balance with every application. You look at both sides of the equation and you balance them. So. I think that, uh, is what's before you tonight and it's not different, as I said, than every application that comes to you for variances. That that's what you're used to doing. You're looking at it and saying. There are. What, what will be promoted by allowing this? What can be a negative impact by allowance?
I, I have a question for Ms. Casey, if I might. I just pulled up the ADU ordinance and sort of, sort of ran, ran through it at speed, so. My mark may not be exactly precise, but there's a fairly lengthy section on the R nine zone. And it seems to permit a lot of things, except if you start messing with the envelope um, of the building and its fight to setbacks and so forth. Um, in that case, you know, then it, it may trigger a variance, but it seems to, seems to say, and I, I seek guidance from Ms. Casey, that if you don't do that, you have a relatively clear path without, without need for additional um, variances or permits. So I don't, I don't know how familiar, I mean, I, I can't swear that I know every word of that ordinance, but, because I just looked at it right now. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering, seeking.
Well, George, I don't, I don't think though, that there's any question that it needs variances for this proposed use. I mean, I'm going to ask Derek, but. I, I don't think that's an issue.
Why we're here.
As to whether it needs variances or not, it does, does need the variances.
Yeah.
If the house met the setbacks and they wanted to put an ADU in and it didn't require parking, the board would not be looking at this application. That's as simple and as basic as it gets.
Well, my question was that there's this lengthy section about R nine zone in dealing with undersized lots and things that do not meet the zoning requirement. Pardon?
I've not seen that in the, the ADU ordinance.
Um, I can give you the, I think, I think I can give you the, uh, it, um, it's, well, it's under figure twenty-four. On, it, on, it says it's subsection K of something or other, non-conforming lots. Um, I'm looking at page seventeen, um, as I pulled it up from the website.
But what's the ordinance section, George?
Yeah, yeah, let me, pardon me, but let me sort of get to the top of it and I'll tell you.
I thought as if it, if it's a reference to a figure, it's probably in the neighborhood character. There's a R nine provision in, in that section.
I, I, I wish I had my grasp of, of that, uh, but I don't, so I'm trying to find it for you. I mean, it's a, there's a lot of, lot packed into that ordinance, so. Okay, yeah, it says, yes, um, it's titled neighborhood residential zoning standards. It starts on page two of this ordinance and goes to page seventeen where it talks about the R nine zone.
That's a generic small zone lot adjustments for primarily single family dwellings. It's not the ADU ordinance. The ADU ordinance is, is contained in can be two fifty-five, C three, and then the, uh, can be two fifty-six, two, and it, and it clearly states that the ADU needs to meet the, the setbacks. It can be built on a small lot, a substandard lot, but it needs to comply with the, the bulk requirements that pertain to that lot.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Board members, additional comments, questions, discussion? If not, if we have no more discussion, if someone would like to make a motion. Should we discuss this further? Michael, you're muted.
Um, I'll make a motion, give it a try. I'm going to make a motion that we deny the variance for the FAR and the related bulk variances.
Second.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, um, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes. Anyway, just, just to clarify, if you're voting yes, but, but why don't, why don't we make this easier? If you want to vote to deny, I think it'd be better to just say deny application, because I think voting yes could be a little confusing here, so. Okay.
So you. What do you want the voter to say that when they?
Yeah, I'd like each person who's voting to say, you know, deny application. That way there's not any confusion.
Okay.
Okay, uh, deny.
Ms. Coulson?
Oh, you're muted.
What's the alternative to deny then?
Approve.
Okay, approve. Mr. Floy?
Denied.
Mr. Schreiber?
Denied.
Mr. Stein?
Approve.
Ms. Donna?
Karen, am I eligible to vote? I was not here the last meeting.
At the last meeting, we didn't have any testimony, did we?
No.
We just carried it. So yes, you're eligible to vote.
Okay, approve.
Chairman Cohen?
Denied.
Well, then the application's denied.
Thank you all. That was a spirited discussion and, um, I forgot to remind you of the nuance of the number of votes we needed, so even with that last one would not have been enough to approve it. So again, I much appreciated the, the, the discussion and consideration of this, uh, of this application.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to the next hearing. Uh, the next case is Z twenty-four dash four ninety. Twenty-one Vernon Circle, block six thousand one, lot two in the R five T zone. Aaron, is everything in order with?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay. Uh, Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Steve, excuse me just a second. Can we take two minutes, three minutes?
Certainly. Okay, so we'll come back. It's nine thirteen. It'll say nine sixteen. Let's take three minutes.
Brian, do you need anybody from the, uh, other side?
Uh, yes, we've got, uh, Jeff Fleischer, our architect, and, uh, Colleen Murphy, uh, the applicant. And, and actually Zemmer Gatai, the other applicant as well, but, uh, I don't think he'll speak tonight, but those are three.
Mr. Fleischer, Fleischer, and who else? Sorry, I'm trying to get him over.
Uh, the, um, Colleen Murphy. And then the last person alphabetically, uh, uh, Zemmer is the other homeowner.
Zemmer Gatai, Gatai.
That's the, that's the one.
Okay.
Hey. Are we all back here? All right, let's resume now. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome.
Zemmer Gatai and Colleen Murphy are the owners and applicants of twenty-one Vernon Circle. Um, they're seeking a C one variance to permit the elimination of the two required parking spaces, which are located within the existing two car garage. And they seek to regrade the existing driveway to permit parking in the driveway in exception to the required front yard setback, parking setback, um, properties in the R five T zone in the former Princeton Township zone, the existing lot. And single family house are complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations. Um, I note the applicant was recently granted zoning approval to expand the existing one story home to a two story uh, home with a large second floor addition. Um, the proposed improvements, which are currently underway, do comply with the applicable zoning uh, requirements. The existing two car garage leading to the two car basement, uh, garage slopes toward, uh, the lot slopes down toward the garage and the grade drops from a little more than eighty-two feet at the property line, just slightly seventy-eight foot elevation at the garage entrance. The applicant is seeking to level this driveway grade and establish a retaining wall in front of the garage. The garage will be converted to a living area in the basement and the two proposed parking spaces in the driveway, they do not meet the required twenty-five foot front yard parking setback, um. And the parking, proposed parking setback is measured to the end of a nineteen foot long parking space, which is the requirement. Um, the required parking setback is twenty-five and the proposed parking setback is one foot. And, and it's kind of on a slant. It's, uh, I think I made an error on the, uh, other setback, but, um, it's one foot and it's, uh, five point five feet on the other, because the, the, uh, it's a parallelogram. It's not a, it's not a rectangular driveway. It's on the cul-de-sac. And they requested C one consideration. And that's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Derek, just one, Derek, one quick question. You're saying the proposed parking setback is one foot and it's five point five feet?
Right, so if you look on the, uh, sketch of the driveway, the, the, on the one side, the, uh, the driveway length from the, uh, front of the garage is twenty feet, so a nineteen foot space would require, uh, one foot variance. It would, it would, uh, excuse me, confusing myself. It, it would need to be, uh, it would need, it would need a, uh, one foot, I am correct. Excuse me, I'm confusing myself, sorry. So, uh, the twenty foot setback, uh, would need a, uh, the twenty foot space would need a, a five foot setback to comply and the twenty-four point five foot space would, would, uh, need another, uh, one foot setback to comply.
Okay.
Thank you. Karen, excuse me, I forgot to ask if all the paperwork was in order for this.
I thought you did already, Steve. It is in order, but I think before we went to break, you, you asked me that.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
All right, so, um, thank you, Derek. Um, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. Uh, thank you for sticking with us, uh, tonight. Um, as Mr. Bridger said, uh, first, I very much appreciate, um, him clarifying. I know, uh, members all, almost always go out and look at the property and, uh, you see, oh, there's a lot of construction here. Did somebody jump the gun? Uh, uh, no, they're, they're, uh, doing compliant renovations to their home. And as part of that, they are looking to solve the, the parking problem, uh, with this property that existed likely since it was built. Uh, you'll hear from, uh, uh, the homeowners here this evening, um, and, uh, the architect to take you through, uh, the project, but. But but ultimately, we're looking at, uh, a home that was built with a front-facing basement garage. Uh, the slope of this twenty-foot section, uh, is so steep that it is unusable. Uh, so these homeowners have never been able to get a car into the garage and really can't even park on, uh, the sloped driveway. And as you'll see, end up parking essentially in the street, um, uh, kind of overlapping the sidewalk. Uh, because, uh, that's the only place they can effectively get a vehicle in and out. This board has looked at other, um, parking, uh, front yard parking cases before and and, uh, we're very cognizant of the importance of looking at alternatives. Uh, and here you'll see in, in, it says a C one variance. There are two other places on this lot that driveways could go. One unfortunately is a Princeton, uh, sewer or stormwater easement, uh, that cannot be built upon. Uh, that was, uh, unfortunately, uh, what we were hoping to do, but confirmed with the town that it's not a place that we can build on. And the other side you will see is a steep slope, uh, just as steep as what we're looking at. Um, retaining walls, shed, trees, and it's not a place that a driver could be built either. So the proposal here is to fill in the existing unusably steep driveway as part of the renovation. And allow them to get their cars off the street and onto their property, um, uh, solving something that the, this property owner, their predecessors and the neighbors. Um, have all been looking to correct, uh, for quite some time. Uh, so with that, I, I'd like to, um, invite, we'll have two witnesses, uh, tonight. Uh, first, Ms. Murphy, uh, the, uh, owner applicant or or half of the owner applicant. And and Jeff Fleischer, the architect for the project as well. So if we'd want to swear them both, then I'd be happy to present them now.
Okay, can we see them and they're muted? I see Mr. Fleischer. I don't see your client, Mr. Kennedy.
She might be, uh, she's on a.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's on a different screen. Okay, uh, and Mr. Fleischer, can you unmute yourself? Right, do you both swear or fund that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So, Colleen, if we could start with you, um, and and just briefly introduce yourself and your, your family, the board, and and, uh, what your connection to Princeton is and what you're. Uh, looking to do here with your project.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for, uh, helping us, Mike. So, uh, my husband, Zemmer Gatai, and I have been in the Princeton, in Princeton for, since two thousand and five. We're professors at Princeton, um, and we've lived in this home, uh, for the past twelve years. And, um, as Mr. Kennedy said, we, uh, have always been faced, as he's going to show you some pictures, with this problem with our not being able to use. Uh, our driveway at all. And we found out from our neighbors that the previous owners also never were able, in fact. The neighbors have lived in the house since they were, their house was built next door and they've never seen anyone use the drive, the driveway or the garage, because they're, uh, it's unusable. Um, but anyway, we, we, you know, we have two kids are going to school in Princeton, and so we've been in the town a long time. And we would like to finally solve this problem that we've been dealing with for many years.
And I know, Mr. Bridger clarified this, but the other work you're doing, you pulled your permits and that's all done, uh, with the, okay, thank you. Um, uh, so with that, I'd, I'd like to, we've got one exhibit, uh, tonight. Uh, I'd love to share my screen and mark this is, is A one, if that's all right.
Okay.
Make sure I pick my correct screen here. Uh, so Ms. Murphy, um, first, as, you know, to orient the, the board to where, um, uh, twenty-one Vernon is, uh, it's in the R five. District that blue arrow is, uh, pointing, uh, towards your neighborhood, uh, more or less?
Yeah, it's, uh, right there in this cul-de-sac here.
Uh, then kind of same orientation, but, uh, you're, you're kind of pie, uh, pizza pie-shaped lot, um, shown there in the area map. That, that's it?
Yes.
Then, uh, flipping orientations, I guess we're looking at your property and and I, uh, this is just with the aerial photo, I guess, probably shows the problem, uh, precisely. Uh, or at least shows the, the, the result for the last several decades, right? Those, those are two cars parked in front. Of the driveway and the only place you could actually level and 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 get out of one.
Yeah, because if you move any farther forward, the car is tipping and it actually feels like it's going to fall into the, into the house. So those are our cars just parked. Like, uh, across the sidewalk area.
And, uh, I, I see a few other cars parked in the street, but you know, because it's a cul-de-sac, is there a lot of other places to park around the, uh, because of the curb cuts?
No, in fact, and those are our neighbors' cars. And then you have, there's a driveway right next to where that blue line is. So it's already, oh, and there's a, um, a drainage. Right between our house and the next driveway, so we can't park there either on the street. So it's very little parking anywhere in there on that area.
So, uh, I guess we'll start looking at a couple of photos of, of the, I'll say, existing. These are taken right before you started your renovations, so.
That's correct.
All right.
So we have our, um, and, you know, we have our car plugged in, but that's also a problem, because we can't do it into, in our garage, be, obviously.
And and if you were fully parking in the street, you wouldn't be able to charge there either, would you?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and and again, I think you said this before, but not only have you not parked in the driveway of the steepness, but you really can't. Have you been able to get a car in and out to actually park in the garage?
No, no, not at all. It's, uh, it's just, it's quite dangerous.
Uh, I mean, I, I just put it this way, but you know what they were thinking when they built this?
Nineteen sixty-seven? No, I have no idea.
Um, next, I guess this shows some of the current construction, but, uh, uh, this is the side profile showing the, the, the grade?
Yeah, so you can see how steep it is, just if, just you tip, like going into the garage is like, um, it feels like you're going down a ski slope.
And, uh, if, if this is only twenty feet long, uh, and and about, uh, seven or eight feet deep there, um, I. We, we can do some math, but that is, that is a, um, a, a, a dangerous slope. Is that your, your take there?
Yeah, that is.
All right, um, so here, uh, this is the, a piece of the site plan here, um, and it is kind of reversed from what we were just talking about, but on the right, though. Um, that blue area, that is the township, I'll say township, it was the former township, but that is a easement held by Princeton, where unfortunately you could not build a driveway. Is that correct?
That's true.
And then on the other side, and we'll see some photos of this, that's, uh, an area also where, uh, you, you can't physically build a driveway, unfortunately.
No.
All right, and that red line, you know, that's the, 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 the lot line of the, of the house. Uh, so, you know, to, to finding what the front yard is and is it, um, uh, to, to be behind. So, looking at this next photo here, um, this one has the trees, the foliage gone, but, but it, it shows, you know, what is behind your house? You can kind of see it, uh, in this photo, but is there, you know, a slope down to a stream there?
Yeah, there's a slope down to a stream and, um, a wooded area that we're, that, yeah, anyway, there's a stream right that's running through by there.
So, uh, uh, unfortunately, the further you go back to actually be able to be in a compliant location, the more either into that stream area or or deeper the slope things get.
That's correct.
Uh, it's a little hard to see, but also on the, on the side of your home now, on, on the side that is not encumbered by the Princeton easement. You've, uh, got a couple of things. Is there a, a shed there as well?
Yeah, there's a shed and a retaining wall, because it actually is quite steep there as well.
So I guess this next shot, this shows a photo, I think that arrow shows kind of where, where perhaps your husband was standing when he took it, but looking towards the street where the. Um, I guess a conceivably, a, a parking space would, would go, but the terrain and and retaining wall and and trees would.
Yeah.
Right with that?
That's exactly right.
Um, so. I want to have some questions, uh, for the architect to take us through, but, uh, if there's any questions about the existing use or condition, certainly happy to have, uh, the applicant, uh, answer them at this time, if, uh, if the board would like.
I do have a question. Do you, when it's really heavy rainfall, does water flow into the garage area?
There's a drain that's, uh, set close to the garage, you know, so we've never had flooding into that. Because that drain, we keep it, we try to keep it from getting blocked.
Thank you.
I, I have a question.
Sure, certainly.
Yeah, I, if you could put up the, the slide with the easement in pink or blue. I was wondering, because I was out there, when you approached the municipality, did you propose a specific location? And, um. We. For the driveway.
Yes, so the, 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 honestly, when I was introduced to the case, uh, was initially presented with this as well, let's, let's get the approval to, to fill in the driveway. That's the only option. Uh, at which point I, I actually approached the engineering department and and asked, uh, h- hoping that it was the type of easement that, that either waivers could be granted. Or perhaps was not used actively, or that there would be some process to allow, um, either a garage, which would have been the, uh, homeowner's preference. Um, uh, or just a driveway. Unfortunately, this type of basement would permit neither o- on any of those locations. So we even had hoped, uh, if even just a driveway was permitted, but not a structure, to somehow try to tuck a garage back behind. Um, and then just use it for access. Um, unfortunately, um, no type of improvements like that could be built on this easement.
Okay, because I, when I first saw it, I, I wondered. Would there be a place for the garage, but it would have meant, you know, that, that little one-story, you know, between. The main, main part of the house and the easement. Of making that a garage, of building a garage, and you would really only encroach on a very small part. Of the.
That was actually our preference.
Okay, yeah, that, that jumped right out of me, at me. And, but did, did they know you were asking for that?
Oh, yes. Um, uh, we were, we were hoping for any combination of structure or even just some part of the, of the, of the driveway. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, we were hoping, frankly, because we weren't quite sure what was under there, that perhaps it was even, uh, something that could be abandoned or or deeded back or unused. And, uh, unfortunately, uh, not the case.
Okay, um, that's unfortunate, but I'm glad that's the answer and you, you explored it. Because it wasn't, yeah.
Now, the, 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 the secondary option of at least getting these cars off the street is, is not what these homeowners want. Really, they would like to have a, a reasonable place for a garage. Um, and there's, uh, the ideal place would have been back behind there, um, either on that easement or next to it. And, you know, we, the hope was, well, gosh, if we can't even, but we can't build a structure on it, at least maybe let us get some of the driveway up there and.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yep.
So, uh, perhaps if there's no other questions for the applicant, I, I'd like to, um, very quickly, um, have our architect, um, introduce himself. I know he's been qualified. Before this board many times, but, uh, Jeff, you could very briefly in the, in the, uh, most rapid and yet appropriate way, uh, give your credentials, uh, to the board, so I got to be a.
Uh, good, good evening. Um, I have a bachelor's in architecture from the Jersey Institute of Technology. I've had my own practice in Flemington, New Jersey for the past twenty-seven years. Um, I've appeared in front of this board on several occasions.
Okay, um, yes, that's, we'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, so Jeff, you've been working with these homeowners, uh, on likely what everyone when to investigate this was kind of seeing, but the revisions of the, of the property. But, uh, perhaps we're not quite focused on that. I, I guess upper right is the, the current elevation. Bottom right is, uh, the, uh, you know, I guess administratively approved, um, revisions to the house that you designed?
Yes, it was a second-story addition.
And on the left side, we have this kind of side profile, um, of the house, uh, as, as approved, but in the bottom right, can you talk a little bit about what, um? What is happening next to the filled-in area?
Um, so there, there's a small open area to allow daylight down into the basement where, where that hand is right now. Um, so we're just proposing a concrete retaining wall, um, so that we can level out the driveway for a flat parking surface.
Yes, and that, that wall would also, I suppose, keep a, a car from, uh, entering the, the kitchen, uh, of, of, of the applicants?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Bridger, in, in his description, was talking about the actual distance for the variances that we were, and I didn't want to interrupt, but, you know, we do have a diagram that kind of shows that it is. A bit confusing to, to think about the numbers, but ultimately, on the left here, you can see the current condition. On the right, we have the site plan showing what Princeton considers a parking space, a nineteen-foot-by-nine box, for which there need to be two. Um, and on, on the right side, in the trapezoid that Mr. Bridger talked about, the backside, you know, the closest point of that box would be one foot, not from the street, but from the lot line. And on the left, um, because it's, uh, you know, the curvature of, of the lot line here, uh, would be five and a half feet. So that is the relief needed. Now, even though that's the relief, an actual car, um, would be much closer to the house and 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 further. Uh, that's not what the variance is, that Princeton considers the parking space envelope. But ultimately, that visually shows the current condition, what they're forced to do now, and, uh, what we're hoping to achieve for them. Which is to get those cars off the street, onto their property, so they can plug them in and and park them, uh, in a, in a usable, the, unfortunately, the only usable place, um, on, uh, appropriate for their. Uh, on their property. Um, uh, there's no other place, unfortunately, that would bring them into a compliant location, uh, but this is several steps. I would say infinitely better, uh, than the current condition, and we're hoping that, uh, you, you, you see that the C one hardship of the existing location of the home. Uh, the Princeton easement and the steep slopes on the other side, uh, as well as the, uh, stream corridor, uh, the retaining wall, uh, the trees and the other items that. Don't make it, allow it to be possible to, to bring, uh, parking back on the, uh, less obvious side. Uh, unfortunately, we, we, we too, like, uh, uh, Mr. Floyd, thought we had a, a solution on, on the, we'll call the left side, on looking this way, it's on the right side here. Uh, but unfortunately, uh, a municipal easement keeps that from, from happening. Jeff, any other pieces of the, uh, fill-in, uh, project or e- elements of this, do you like to?
No, I think you've described it well, and and we did explore all those options that, that we've talked about. Kind of locked into this location.
Uh, I'll, one last question, Jeff, you know, if, 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 if you didn't have this kind of open area here to allow some, some, some light in the basement. Uh, would you, would you recommend having the parking be any closer than in any way? Would, would there be landscaping or some other appropriate buffer from the house there?
There would, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so, so with that, if, if the board has any questions for, um, our architect, I'm happy to, uh, to, to, to answer them.
I have a question.
Yes.
If you took your existing driveway. Down towards the garage and you just elevated it up, level, would you still need a variance?
Well, that, that's what we're proposing to do, to bring it level.
I know, I know, but. I guess. My confusion, I guess, is why you need a variance at all, since existing driveway is there. And you wouldn't, if you just put your cars all the way in, wouldn't need a variance. So if you just elevated that up, why do you need a variance?
Well, I don't believe the, even the, the current driveway ties to the current variance.
My, my take on is that it, while it is kind of a fantasy, technically, the existing garage, which actually wouldn't comply today because of its front-facing and flush with the front of the, uh, of the home. If you could get a car in there and and parked it there, that would be a compliant location. So technically, there are now two compliant spaces down underneath the home. It just happens to be that they're. Unusable, uh, and inaccessible. Um, uh, but that would be the two spaces that the town, or that the, the borough, uh, excuse me, that, that, that Princeton would consider. That they have now, that we are, I guess, technically taking away by filling in the driveway and making the driveways.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions of the architect or the applicant or the owner? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, can you take your image down? All right. Board members, are there any other questions before we, uh, consider going into the public portion of the hearing? Hey, Mr. Kennedy, we're going to, you want to? Hey, Mr. Kennedy, we're going to, you wanna sum up here before we go on?
Or, uh, thank you again, uh, for, for considering this tonight. Uh, this has been a decades-long problem, uh, and, they have their contractor out finishing up a project, and we thought this would be a good time to, to try to find a, a solution, you know, by, uh, by filling it in, it gets these cars off the street, uh, much to the, the delight of, of the neighborhood. Uh, frankly, uh, it, it is not perfect, but it is the closest to a good solution of all the things that we've looked at, that, uh, this, lot, which is quite unique with, uh, the unfortunate easement to one side and the slopes and all the other problems on the other side. Uh, it is the only place, uh, realistically, that they could have it on their property, and they are excited, uh, uh, to, to get their cars, off the street and be able to plug them in and, and, and get into their house, uh, like, like most other people in Princeton. So with that, um, um, thank you so much, uh, you know, the, the balancing here of, of the C1, we, we, don't see any negative. This is all improvement, um, uh, in here, um, and, and, and hope you see it the same. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, we're going to open this up to the public, so if anyone in the audience, uh, would like to speak, they have to s- uh, signify that by raising their hands, uh, at the bottom of the screen. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this?
There are no hands.
Okay. And we'll give it a second or two here. All right, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Again, Mr. Kennedy, sum up.
On this day, again, thank you all, um, and, 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 and hope, uh, you see this as we did, as, as, you know, finally a solution for this, uh, for this family, uh, with really no other alternatives, um, but to, um, uh, but to, to fill this in and, and, and thank, and finally get their cars back off the street. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, Board members, uh, do we want to discuss this? Any questions, comments, or motions? I actually think this is a good solution to a very, very difficult lot. Um, I don't know if there are any, uh, other places to park on the lot. I think these, I think this would work. It's not ideal, but I think it's the very best of a very difficult situation.
I agree. I move, will you accept the, uh, application?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion of the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. Okay. Our last and final hearing of the evening, is case number Z twenty-four dash four eighty-four, eighty-four. Um, fifty-eight to sixty William Street, block forty-seven point oh-two, lot thirty-six.
Um, Steve, Steve, I'm not gonna be able to stay for this one.
Okay.
Um, so.
Thank you for staying as long as you could.
Thank you so much, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Karen, uh, the notice is in order?
The noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, thank you. Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Princeton University is the owner of fifty-eight dash sixty William Street, and they are seeking a floor area variance pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy D four, and related C bulk variances to permit alterations in additions to illegally, existing non-compliant two-family dwelling, subject properties in the R four B zone, uh, the former Princeton borough. It's not complying with regard to the required six thousand six hundred square foot lot area, the existing's three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight. Um, not complying regarding the sixty-foot lot width, Rick, uh, existing forty-five point seven-two. And it's not complying regarding lot depth, the requirement's one hundred, the existing's seventy-seven point nine eight. And the existing two-family dwelling is not complying, uh, regarding the smaller side yard setback requirement of eight, the existing is four point five eight. Um, it's not complying regarding the combined side yard setback requirement of twenty. Um, the existing is, um, uh, excuse me, zero point, um, three encroachment on an adjoining lot, and, um, the larger side yard setback, uh, again, is twelve, and it's not complying, it encroaches into the, side yard lot, and the smaller side yard setback requirement's eight, and the existing is four point five eight. The rear yard requirement's thirty-five, the existing is twenty point one, one-three feet. Um, there's numerous height-to-setback, uh, requirements, um, in different parts of the house. I'm not gonna go through all of them. Um, and then the, uh, floor area ratio, the requirement is sixty-seven point five eight, and that's proportional floor area ratio, existing is eighty-nine point eight-five, and impervious coverage requirement sixty-one and a half percent, and the proposed is seventy, or existing is seventy-one point four-two. Uh, the three, the two-family requires three parking spaces, there are two existing, and the parking setback in the rear is requirement is four feet from the property line, the existing is one and a half feet. The applicant is proposing to remove the two rear, two-story sections of unit sixty and add a new, smaller rear, two-story additions. And a single-story addition is proposed to each unit in the rear as well. The existing lower pitched roof of unit fifty-eight will be demolished and reconstructed to match the gable roof at unit sixty. The plans include adding two new gable roofs facing the rear and left side over the new addition. Small patios in the rear of each yard are proposed for each unit. The existing front porch will be rebuilt in its existing footprint. Um, the other improvements include new windows, new, uh, cement, uh, lap clapboard siding, new asphalt shingles on the sloped roof, and a new EPDM.
Eric, you're muted.
The whole time?
Just a second ago.
How did it go off?
You dropped off after EPDM.
That's, okay, well, good, thank you. Uh, the EPDM roofs on the lower pitched roofs, uh, new heating and air conditioning, systems are proposed for each unit. The remaining interior of each unit will be, uh, renovated. Each unit contains a living room, kitchen, two bedrooms, one and a half bath, and a laundry room. Existing parking area located at the rear of the site will be shortened to a nineteen-foot compliant length. The stall width rem- will remain at the existing eight feet, nine inches. Um, although the existing FAR of the building decreases, the proposed FAR exceeds the maximum permitted, um, which is sixty-seven point five eight, and as I noted earlier, existing is eighty-nine point nine five. The proposed, will be reduced to seventy-seven point five. And, um, there's numerous variances, there's, there's about twenty-two. I don't know if you wanna read them into the record, or if we could just accept the report, um. At the end of the day, the impervious coverage is reduced and the, the, um, the FAR is reduced, the lot, I'll go through them. The lot area requirement is six thousand six hundred, existing's thirty-two eighty-eight, the lot width requirement is sixty feet, the existing is forty-five point seven-two. The depth requirement is one hundred, existing is seventy-seven point nine eight. Um, and a lot of these variances, when you take away a structure, there's no grandfather clause on a two-family, um, so, when you take away the roof structure and you replace it, it's a variance. So, um, the front porch setback on the right, the requirement is four, um, the proposed, uh, will be four point oh-two, and that's under neighborhood character, so that does comply. Um, the left side requirement is eight, the proposed will be zero point five feet. The smaller side yard setback, uh, this is the new roof addition in the front. It's eight, is required, and proposed is zero point seven-five feet. The combined side yard setback for the new roof is addition is twenty feet, and the proposed is five point three-three feet. The smaller side yard setback for the new roof addition side, the requirement's eight, and, uh, the proposed is zero point five-two to the overhang of the new two-story addition. The combined side yard setback for the new roof addition, the requirement's twenty, and the proposed is twelve point one-nine to the overhang of the new addition. The combined side yard setback for the one-story addition, uh, is twenty feet, the proposed will be thirteen point five-six feet, and the smaller side yard setback for the one-story addition is eight, the proposed will be one foot. Uh, the rear yard setback to the new, uh, addition in the back requirement is, um, thirty-five feet, the proposed is thirty point eight-nine. The rear porch setback requirement, setback is thirty-one, the proposed is twenty-five point two-nine. The right side rear porch setback, uh, requirement is eight, the proposed is seven point nine-two feet. The air conditioner setback for unit fifty-eight, um, requirement is three, the proposed is one feet. And then, um, there's four height-to-setback ratios for the, uh, new addition, um. In the impervious coverage, the existing is sixty-one and a half, and the, I mean, the required is sixty-one and a half, the proposed will be sixty-nine point one-four. The requirement for parking is three spaces, um, there's existing two, and there will be two, uh, once the project is done. Uh, there's a four-foot parking setback requirement from the property line for the parking spaces, and the proposed is one point five feet. And, uh, the parking stall width requirement is nine, whereas the proposed is eight point eight feet. Um, and those are the, the bulk variances, um. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them.
Uh, Derek, Derek and Karen, I have a quick question. My wife works at Princeton. Do I have to recuse myself?
Uh, she works for the university?
Yes.
Um, but you do not.
I do not.
All right. Uh, do you feel that you can be, um, objective and neutral in this application?
I do.
We have Mr. Degrezia here tonight, Mr. Degrezia. Do you have any thoughts or comments?
Um, uh, you mean on the, uh, the, um, Steven?
Yes.
Can you increase your volume?
Yeah, we need to, and we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, how's that? Uh, let me see, let me, um, give me one second here, and let me see if I can adjust it. Um, is, is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
It is. Um, just, let me one second. So I, I'm not sure if he has recused himself in the past, um. I, how many, how many, um, how many, uh, vote, uh, people that are eligible to vote are there?
We have six now. We had one member who had to leave, so we have six.
Okay. Um.
I don't, I don't know about past applications, Chris, because this is the first time it's been raised with me, so I can't comment about that.
Give me one second. Yeah, um, I, I just don't know if the relationship with his wife, who's being, you know, has financial stake in the university, so to speak, because she's an employee, kind of opens the door for a challenge, so.
Okay.
Uh, uh, you know.
All right, then, Stephen, um.
Although I would like to have him for, for the.
I know. Uh, co- comment is, is, um, well-taken, so, I think it would be best if you recused yourself.
Great, actually, I recuse myself.
All right, so we need you to, um, mute and, um, cut your video, please.
Need to bug off completely, then?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you, Stephen, we appreciate it.
Good night, thank you.
Chris, so you have five tonight. Do you want to proceed tonight, uh, if the board is willing? Do you want to carry it? What would you like to do?
I guess we'll pre- proceed, and then, um, you know, if it gets late, we can maybe carry it, and then, um, at the, you know, maybe someone will have the opportunity to review.
Yeah, that's, I, uh, the, that would be the only thing, that that would mean then that members who, are not here tonight, so we have two members then, who,
Have potential.
Would not have participated. In order for that to change at the next meeting, they would have to both listen to the tape to give you, um, a full board that gets carried.
Understood. That would be great.
All right, so that means you would like to continue?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, uh, Mr. Chair, should I start?
Please begin.
Thank you. Um, we, thank you very much. Uh, for the record, my name is Christopher Degrezia from the law firm of Fegory, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. Um, this evening, we're here to talk about a renovation project involving a charming duplex, located at fifty-eight sixty William Street. Um, it is proposed to go through some extensive interior and exterior improvements. Um, one of the things, you know, cuz you hear all the list of variances, but one of the things that I just wanna point out is, though, even though there's a lot of exterior changes and adjustments, we're not actually increasing the scale of the building, and in fact, we are substantially reducing the floor area, so it's not something out of scale, it fits very nicely. It's about, um, reusing an existing building and making it, um, you know, just putting a lot of, love into it so that it could continue to be used as a two-family structure. Uh, Derek went through, uh, Mr. Bridger went through a number of the proposed improvements from new windows, new siding, new roof, uh, new heating and cooling, um, systems. And, um, he went through the list of, eh, of variances. And the other point I just wanna make is, as you go through that list and, and, and go through each and every variance, you'll see that the proposal is vastly, a, a vast improvement over the current conditions and is more keeping with the zone plan. You know, for example, and I know, uh, Mr. Bridger already pointed it out, we're requesting an FAR variance. Um, the existing FAR is eighty-nine point eighty-five percent. We are reducing that to seventy-seven point fifty percent. So we're going from two thousand nine hundred fifty-four square feet, approximately, to two thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet, approximately. So you'll get to see the plans, we'll go through it, but many of these variances are because of existing, um, conditions. There are, even the roof line today actually goes over the property line. So we're requesting variances related to sidebar set setback, but in many ways, we're improving it because we're removing that encroachment. Um, with that being said, I'd like to call up our, our consultants. Would you like us to swear them all in, or one at a time?
Oh, we can, we just, oh, excuse me, we just need their names, please.
Yes, uh, we have Ronnie Breckenzer, who's already brought over. She's our architect. Um, Tom O'Shea, I believe he's still in the attendees, so we may wanna bring him over. He's our civil engineer. Kate Keller, our professional planner. And Marta Diavilla, are, who's the university project manager, and she's already here.
All of you would raise your right hand, you all swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Okay, um, let's start with, we put together a nice, uh, presentation. I'll start by, um, introducing you to our architect, uh, Ronnie Breckenzer. Ronnie, can you? Uh, Ronnie Breckenzer. Ronnie, can you give us a a brief uh summary of your qualifications and experience and license?
Can you please unmute and make yourself visible, please?
I think she was having some difficulty with her microphone, so she's going to be um giving her testimony through telephone.
Okay, but will she, we'll be able to see her?
Oh, you could see her.
You can see her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
R A B A R.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Ronnie, I don't think we could hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So as I mentioned, we put together a presentation that is um uh basically a PowerPoint of twenty-one slides. We can mark the presentation as A1 if you like, and then we could, and as we go through, we could reference the page that we are referring to.
Okay.
Uh, Cr- Christopher, I'm the one who's uh who has the presentation, so I will share the screen. I just need to make sure that I can, that I have the available, you know, the. There it goes. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is um A1. This is sheet one. And um we need to go through your qualifications.
My qualifications are wrong.
Ronnie.
Yes. I'm just describing the the slideshow.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've been a a licensed, I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been so for thirty-three years. I've had my own practice for about the same amount of time, uh, small firm in Princeton also for thirty-three years. And I've been in front of this board a few times.
Will accept you as an expert.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So would you like me to jump in?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, so let's move to um slide two is our site location. Uh, you can see the proposed site is in black. Fifty-eight sixty William Street is located on the north side of William Street. Uh, it is located behind, between two single-family residences. Behind it is the Firestone Court Townhouses. In front of it is the Friends Center for Princeton University. Can go to slide three. Slide three is our um variance plan. This is the civil engineering one. Lots of information and we will refer back to this one as needed. And if Tom O'Shea needs it, um, we will use this one for civil. Uh, we'll move on to our photos, which is slide four. This is showing the front elevation of the home. Um, it's an existing two-family. If the left side, we call fifty-eight is number fifty-eight. The right side is number sixty. The house is well over a hundred years old. It has had many additions, probably some subtractions as well. Um, and you can see the existing is wood siding and um asphalt shingle roofs. There's also some flat roofs. And on slide five, we'll be looking at the elevations. We, it it's a narrow space, so we have to do it one from the rear and one from the front. This is looking at the left side from the rear. You'll notice uh the driveway comes right up to the existing house. You'll also see the heavy cornice on the left side elevation. That's the portion where it's over the driveway um by a little bit and over the property line by a little bit that Christopher had mentioned. The partial left side elevation front again shows the driveway running right along the left side of the home. And then on slide number six, we will be looking at the rear elevation, which shows some of the uh additions that were made over the years. You will see that these are the ones we proposed to take off. They are in poor condition. Would be the the two-story one, the single-story, and in the back, the um other two-story one with the flat roof that then slopes, sort of an odd uh configuration there. We'll, we'll look into that more, but those are what we're proposing to move, remove. The two cars that you can see parked there are in the two parking spaces that Christopher also mentioned that uh the residence has. Moving on to number seven, we'll be looking at the right side elevations again from the rear and from the front. Um, the right side shows again the sloping um single-story that we proposed to remove and the two-story lower than the rest of the main house that we also proposed to remove. And then we'll move on to slide eight, which shows the property and and the dwelling in context with some other um houses on the street. These are the two single-family um homes on either side. And then side nine is looking from the opposite direction. Uh, you'll see the two single families again, the driveway. You could see a little bit of Firestone Court in the background. At slide nine is the uh view from the front, which is the university and the Friends uh complex. Slide ten, I'm sorry, that's slide ten. Slide eleven is the just a view looking down the driveway. Again, the driveway is on the left side of the house and you can start to see how it winds and turns into the courtyard of the um Firestone Court area. Slide twelve is our variance plan, our site plan. It shows the existing brown color is the existing house that we propose to retain. This is the main body of the house, shows the front porch, which we proposed to rebuild in its same space. The hatched area on the brown, the diagonal hatch, is where we're moving some of the flat roofs that exist and or low-sloped roofs and adding new roofs on top of the existing walls that exist. The crisscross hatch area shows what we propose to remove. So again, it's that single story in the back and the two-story that's that's behind that. What we propose to build back is the green. So the green is a single-story addition across the back of the proper, uh, back of the house with two small porches, one facing rear, one facing right. We also propose a two-story addition um behind that, sort of tucked into the L of the existing house to remain. You'll notice that heavy dark line. That's the uh, the outline of what the proposed s- I'm sorry, what the allowable setbacks are. So as you can see, um it it's a small lot, as Christopher mentioned, and uh the setbacks are are just not, we're not able to comply, obviously. The left side, I also wanted to point out where the driveway runs right along the house. You can see the property line running along there is only a foot away from the existing house and a foot away from both our proposed addition and of course, the existing house that's there now. So it's extremely tight along that side. Behind that, you can see the two parking spaces that currently exist. There's a dashed line there where we propose to, that's where the parking goes now. It's extra deep. We don't need all that. We were proposing to shorten the parking space in order to decrease our impervious coverage. Um, there are two patios. It's a little hard to see, but two very small patios, one for each um dwelling unit. Then we can move to the um.
Before you go on, I just want to.
We can, I'm sorry.
Ronnie, can you hear me? Before you go on, just because you're on this slide, I just wanted to mention one thing to the um to the zoning board um members that um we've been in communication with our rear neighbor, which is the uh Firestone Court Condominium Association. Um, they had sent a letter, I I'm aware, and I'm sure somebody will be here this evening um commenting, or maybe not, I don't know. But um, what I wanted to say is, um, they did make one comment that's directly related to the proposed improvements that we're showing. And in the back, where we're showing um taking up some of that pavement, the association has asked us to consider leaving it in place as is. Um, the, the, the pavers below sort of match the association's driveway that goes through and through the property in the back. And for whatever reason, they did indicate um that they would prefer that we leave it there. We have no objection to that. We could leave it as is. The only item that I want to point out is it would require a variance related to impervious coverage. So if the board is willing to grant that variance, we would be happy to adjust the plan to leave the parking area and the planting around it in its e- existing condition. Okay, sorry, um, Ronnie, you can continue.
Alright, then I was gonna move on to slide thirteen. These are the um, so comparison of the first floor plans. The one on the left is the removal plan. As we spoke about, you can see the existing uh kitchen on the fifty-eight side is that two-story piece that will be removed. The existing kitchen on the sixty side will also be removed. And that's the one-story. The dining room is the two-story, which will be removed. Next to that is our proposed plan. And you could see, we're proposing a small eight-foot addition. It's one-story across the back, which would house uh a mudroom, laundry, powder room. The kitchen on the sixty side is also rebuilt, and that's a new kitchen. It would have a second floor above it. You can see the two air conditioning units that Derek referenced. The one on the right complies, the one on the back corner uh for this fifty-eight side will not. Um, the reason we're removing these, by the way, is they're just in very poor condition. Um, those, those additions were built years ago. They're too close to the ground and the foundations are poor, so those need to be rebuilt. Moving on to slide fourteen, this shows the second floor plan, the removal plan and the proposed. Again, you can see that on the fifty-eight side, we're removing a bedroom that was above the kitchen. And then we're removing a bedroom on the other side. But when you look at the proposed, we're going to put that bedroom back. So what was a three-bedroom home on the fifty-eight side becomes a two-bedroom home, well, on the, on the proposed. And on the sixty side, two bedrooms remain as two bedrooms and one bath on the second floor for each unit. And then we'll move on to the elevations. Slide fourteen is the front elevation. Um, we're again comparing, so the left side here shows the removal elevation. Those heavy dashed lines are what we were moving. So typical on everywhere, we are taking off the old siding, adding new hardy plank cement siding. Same exposure as what was there. We're taking out the old windows, which are a combination of old windows and Anderson windows and installing new Anderson windows. And then you can see on the left side, there's one of the low-sloped roofs on the right side, the fifty-eight side. We propose to take that off and build up, or not changing the walls, but increase the roof pitch so that aligns across the front to give it a more unified appearance as the existing front porch currently does. The front porch runs across both units. Um, the brown for the front porch shows that it needs to be reconstructed. The base of the porch is in bad shape. The foundation is in bad shape. Uh, we hope to retain the porch itself. We'll put a new EPDM roof on it. But we do need to rebuild the porch. As was explained, the height to setback ratios, which you see on here, I'll let our planner discuss more, but um they do not comply, as Derek had mentioned. Uh, moving on to slide sixteen, we'll be looking at the right side elevations now. And again, the right side removal, there we go with the two-story part going away. The two-story part on the fifty-eight side going away, the single-story going away. You can see the heavy dashed line. When you look at the, the proposed, that's in that sort of greeny-gray color. That's what we propose to do. It is smaller. If you look to the right, there the note indicates line of existing structure to be removed. So you can actually see the outline of what was there compared to what we propose. Um, there's the small porches that we discussed and the main body of the house facing front uh has not changed other than the roof that we showed. And we'll move on to slide seventeen, which are the left sides. Um, again, this side is the side along the driveway. So that flat roof above is the roof that projects slightly into the property line and over it by a small amount. We propose to remove that. It's a flat roof. We're going to remove that. And as you can see on the proposed left side, we're going to add on top of the existing two-story walls, a raised sloped roof that we're going to pull back and and hope, and get it out off the property line as much as we can. There's a new gable. That's the front-facing gable that we looked at before. The proposed rebuilt front porch. And on the back, you can see the single-story addition. And again, the the dotted lines indicating what was there and how we're pulling back from what was there. And then we'll move to slide eighteen, which is the rear elevation.
And Ronnie, just to, just to clarify, um, that space that we're taking out was essentially a third bedroom, so now both of the units would only have two bedrooms. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes. Yes, correct. So they both have a, an open kitchen, living, dining, and the mudroom on the first floor, two bedrooms and a, and a full bath on the second. So this again shows the dotted line where we looked at the photo showing all of that in the back to be removed. And then the addition that we propose with the single-story across the back, the two-story behind that, and then the proposed roofs on the left side to pull it back um off the property line, also to unite the back of the house as well. And then we can move on to our slide. Next slide. Next slide is actually showing the variances, and this would be Kate, our planner, unless there are questions for me.
Board members, any questions of the architect? Okay, please proceed.
Okay, Kate, are you there? I know she's there somewhere. Let's see.
Yes, sorry. Hold on one second. Sorry about that.
So uh, this is Kate Keller, our professional planner. And in a minute, once she gets her uh equipment straightened out, I'm gonna ask her for her qualifications.
Okay. Sorry about that. Hi, everybody. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board.
Okay, can you tell us a little about your um education and licensing?
Sure. Um, my name is Kate Keller. Um, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Um, I currently am a principal with the firm of Phillips Price Greigle Lady Hughes LLC based in Hoboken, New Jersey. Um. We um, I've been providing testimony before land use boards and have been licensed since approximately twenty fifteen. And I've served as a professional planner across the state um for about uh fifteen years total of experience. I hold um a master's degree in planning from the University of Pennsylvania as well.
Will accept you as an expert.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, so so I think, you know, we've heard, uh, thank you to um Mr. Bridger for reading his report into the record, and you've heard a lot of the details about this proposal from um our architect. So I'm gonna keep my testimony focused, you know, exclusively. from our architect. So I'm going to keep my testimony focused, you know, exclusively, you know, in general, just looking at the overall variances that are requested here. I'm not going to go too into detail because, as you can see, and as you have heard, there are a number of variances. I think that this way, the easiest way to sort them, as you can see on this exhibit that's up on your screen, and this is page nineteen of the of of the exhibit that are that that Ronnie was going through. So this is the same on the right-hand side of the page is the same site plan diagram that was previously within this presentation. So I think that that was explained rather eloquently in which which is being removed, which is which is the addition, and et cetera. And I think it also, one thing to focus on is the the small size of that building envelope that's in the property. So just to begin, you know, just going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of sort, as it's shown on this plan, I'm going to sort through the variances, kind of in just looking at them in groups. Just because I think that a lot of them category categorized in similar ways. So the first one, you know, and I think, you know, in terms of the burden of proof, technically, this is the highest, or this is the the most intense variance that we're requesting, even though it's actually not, as you can see, is a D four variance for floor area ratio. The maximum permitted proportional FAR on this site, because it is an undersized lot, as I'll get to shortly, is it's sixty-seven point five eight percent, where under current conditions, we're at almost ninety percent, eighty-nine point eight-five, and we are proposing to reduce the FAR to seventy-seven point five. So you know, I think, even though it's listed as a variance, and we do require one, we are reducing the FAR by over ten percent and bringing it into much closer compliance, which what than than what is proposed, than what is currently existing. But also notice, I go through this list of variances where you'll see certain areas are are bolded, certain areas are in italics, but just really to keep going down this list, under lot area and dimensions, the minimum lot area per dwelling, we are about half at what we should be. And that is, this is an existing condition. This is a very old house that was constructed, you know, prior to the current zoning ordinance. And the same goes for minimum lot width and minimum lot depth, to which no changes are proposed. But those, you know, those those dimensions, as well as the slightly irregular shape of the property that you can see on this exhibit on page nineteen, the site plan diagram, really create that small building envelope that we're facing the challenge with. In terms of impervious coverage, again, a variance is being requested here, even though, under the proposed conditions that were on the submitted plan and that you see on your screen, the impervious coverage is being reduced from seventy-one point four-two to sixty-nine point four-one. So that's about a two percent reduction. As Mr. DeGresio noted, we have had some discussions, you know, potentially with the neighbors regarding maintaining the existing paver driveway, which if that is the case, you know, that we will be requesting a variance for impervious coverage, as it would go up by fourteen square feet, which is a nominal amount, but it would take us over that current seventy-one point four-two percent. And you know, that will come up later. If if that is something that the that the association is seeking to ask for tonight, we will, we will obviously, you know, address that after later on in this this presentation. In terms of building setbacks, here are a few, just just really based on the the what's being removed and what's being added. We are looking at variances required for minimum combined side yard setbacks on both sides, minimum left side building setback, that which is, you know, planned left as you're looking at this, and also minimum rear yard building setback. So in terms of the left side and the combined setback, those are due to the renovation of the roof, where the condition is really going to be substantially improved, where the roof where the roof overhang, which goes on for the next lot because of that cornice, is no longer going to be in existence. So you know, while we are still requesting a variance, you'll see that, you know, for example, the combined yard is, you know, almost, it's really almost negative because of what's there, and the same with the 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 left yard building setback. So we are going to have a closer conforming status here for each of those. And the same really goes for the rear yard setback. As you can see clearly from this exhibit, the black and white hatching extends much further into the rear yard than what is being proposed. So again, you know, the rear yard setback is going from twenty feet to thirty feet, or twenty-nine point one seven feet to the gutter where thirty-five feet is proposed. So next slide, please. And this is, this is the same exhibit. This is a continuation of the variance list. I, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot, but it's really, it's really not much when you take it in total. So in terms of the setbacks, and this has to do with permitted projections and equipment, rather than the actual building, we are similarly seeking variances for both minimum left side yard and right side yard, as well as the rear yard setback and the AC condenser setback that was discussed. Same thing goes for the left side's rear yard because that the in in some areas, that new roof line is going to be in the with, it's going to be adjacent, it's going to be on the new bill, it's going to be on the actual building, but in other areas, it is going to be on the front porch. So that's why there are technically two variances required here, because the porch is permitted to project four feet into the setback. So four is required instead of eight, as for the building. Similarly, as you the right yards, the rear right side yard setback, this also has to do with the replacement of the roof gutter, where there are no gutters now. Rear yard setback, once again, this has to do with the the green proposed concrete porch you see on the rear there, again, bringing in a better condition. And then finally, the AC equipment setback, which was just previously discussed, but there's, you know, there's some challenges into where they can be located on the site. But three feet is required where one foot is proposed. And that is that is next to that area within the concrete, right in their area of the concrete front porch where the cursor is right now. And then, almost done, building height to setback ratios, which have been mentioned, we do require variances for these, where maximum of three to one is permitted. At present day, it's almost incalculable on the left-hand side because of the fact that the roof overhang, the roof does overhang onto the lot. So you know, while technically now it's going to be about zero, where three is, you know, where it's where where it does not still not comply, it is clearly a better condition, in my opinion, because it's not going to overhang. And that also has to do with, there's also the fifty-eight point five point to one, which is obviously a very high number. But given the existing conditions on the property, I think that it's 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 again, it represents an improvement. And the same goes for the right side setback, that number is increasing slightly, fifty-six, five point six seven one to one. And that it has to do with the fact that the gutter is going to add into that setback. And just because of the fact this property is undersized, and that the setback there is already small, just that one, you know, the the small factor of the gutter does increase that there. So you know, that's one of the rare instances where we are requesting a new variance that, but but again, it has, it only has to do with the gutter. We're not increasing the footprint of that porch. And then finally, we do have a couple existing non-conforming conditions related to off-street parking in the rear, which one is the deficiency, which is that one point five spaces are per unit are required, where two are existing. In terms of that, again, this is an existing condition. And I would note that also the building size is being reduced, as are the number of bedrooms. So you know, in terms, if you look at population, even though the number of units is staying the same, the potential population of this, well, you know, the number of residents is really going down. Minimum parking space size, nine by nineteen is required, we're eight point eight feet wide. In my opinion, this is de minimis. Again, also, and this is a residential site where people are going to be very familiar with their lots, and it's not been an issue thus far. And the same goes for parking space setback. This is one point two five feet from the rear yard lot line because of the unique configuration of this lot with regards to Firestone Court. You know, this again, has not been an issue in the past, and is not intended to be going forward. So just to briefly, now that I've gone through the variances, you know, just to briefly touch on the proofs, the FAR is a D variance. However, as a D four variance, it's looked at as the type of variance that, excuse me, Martha, can you go back to the last slide, please? Just so I have that in front of me for this. Thank you. Back to slide nineteen. The D four variance is, in some ways, almost, while it rises to the level of a D variance per the municipal land use law, in a lot of ways, it is similar to the C variance, that it affects the built condition rather than the use. So the standard of proof for looking at a D variance, as this board has probably heard from other planners in my position, is you look at it, how the property can accommodate, you know, whether property can accommodate the additional FAR, rather than, it doesn't have to be sure that it's particularly suited or anything like that. And then you also do have to show that the negative criteria. So I think in this case, this is pretty clear cut, in my opinion, from a planning perspective, which is that the FAR is substantially over the limit right now. It is proposed to be reduced. And this is all in conjunction with an overall substantial improvement to the property. I think, as you saw from the prior slides, this is, it's obviously going to be an aesthetic improvement. But I think it's also going to serve as an improvement for variety of reasons, you know, just the higher better living conditions, light air and open space, you know, with the new configurations and getting rid of portions of the property, these those old additions that are have kind of deteriorated over the years. And really, you know, adding storm, new stormwater management features, or even something like a gutter that really does function as a stormwater management feature. So you know, in my opinion, I I believe that that standard of proof is met here because of the fact that it is existing condition that is being substantially reduced in conjunction with all of the other the other improvements to the site. With regard to the, you know, minimum lot area and dimensions, you know, this is, this is the case where I I know that per the ordinance is that because this is a two-family home, it is, it is not considered to necessarily be pre-existing, but these are items where there's no change proposed, there's no opportunity to to get other land. And given that situation, that's why the university has made the decision in pursuing, you know, with their design team, to make these improvements on the property that actually are reducing its size, and therefore bring it into closer conformance, given the conditions that exist on the lot. With regards to impervious coverage, either, you know, in this goes to the case where whether it's being, we do need a variance, whether or not it's being maintained at this level, which again, is a reduction. And while it's a small reduction, I think in combination with all of the other proposals. And I would note that, you know, just for the C variances, as I go through them now, I think that this is a case where there obviously are, there is a hardship on the property in terms of the C one criteria. And that has to do with the the lot size, the existing conditions, and a lot of these these pre-existing nonconformities. However, I think that there's also some case, there's also case in here for reviewing these under the C two criteria and granting them as well, in which the benefits outweigh the detriments. Because some, you know, some of these choices, like proposing the gutter, which with which impacts the side yard setbacks, that that, you know, that's something where the benefits are going to outweigh the detriments, in my opinion. And again, this is, I'm not going to go through each of these individually because I think that it really comes through, just as really a whole, a whole, you know, holistic way of improving this property. Next slide, please. We're going to go back now to slide twenty. And here, again, you know, just in terms of the permitted projections, this is very similar proof, in my opinion, to the to to this, to the principal building setbacks. You have an existing condition. There's some cases, it's being made better. And the places where it's not, it's really at the service of improving the overall site with with the the new with the new the new upgrades. Building height to setback ratio, this is also a tricky one here. Just just in terms of where the numbers, I think, are overstating what the actual situation is here, where it is not not going to have any, it it's not going to be more the numbers are going up, in my opinion, it's not going to have any negative impact on the streetscape or the neighborhood design character, or any of the the items that are looked at per that ordinance. Terms of off-street parking, I think I I stated my opinion on each of those, which is that it's really de minimis, and it is continuation of the pre-existing non-conforming use. Basically, in some, in terms of the negative criteria, we look at whether you have to determine whether this property will have any substantial detriment to the public good, which I, you know, typically means to say surrounding properties. And in my opinion, no, it will not. You know, we've taken the extra step, as we may hear from later on in this proceeding, of of coordinating with the neighbors, and we are willing to work with them, just which is, I think, is a very crucial component here, given the the small lot size and the closeness within. So you know, I think it's going to be an overall major aesthetic improvement. And that even though, in terms of the the impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, I do not see any substantial impairment as a result of this application. This is a unique property. It's an old two-family house on an undersized lot that has, you know, maybe not seen, you know, maybe hasn't seen as much love recently, and they're really looking to have a total renovation of it, that really bring it back to its, you know, it's historic, you know, it's it's historic character, and really just improving the whole site. So while there are a lot of of variances here that are technicalities, and I don't want to say technicalities, because we do require them, but you know, they're rather granular in the sense of the actual existing and proposed conditions. So you know, in my opinion, this advances several purposes of zoning, provides additional light air and open space, promotes the general welfare, all of these, I think, are by bringing it into greater, greater conformance with the ordinance, even though it's slight. There's also, you know, it keeps a two-family house that in its exists, in its condition, that continues to provide residential uses in in locations where where the appropriate, not appropriate densities, because nothing's being increased here, and it actually is being decreased. So you know, in my opinion, given the reasons above, I think that from what the proposal that you've heard, the presentation you've heard tonight, in my opinion, the D four and the C variances can both can all be granted under the the proofs set forth. So I have nothing further directly, but happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions of the planner? Okay, Mr. DeGresio, please proceed.
Thank you.
I think if we go to the next slide, I think that was it. We do have our consultants here for questions. We have the civil engineer as well, and we also have the project manager in addition to the testimony you just heard from our planner and architect.
Do you intend to have them testify, or are they just available?
They're available. Yes, they're, Mr. Chair, they're available for questions. We didn't see any real civil testimony necessary here. But again, we have our engineer here for for questions.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions of the witnesses or the two additional experts? Okay. Mr. DeGresio, do you want to sum up, and then we'll go into executives, we'll go in, we'll open this up to the public?
Sure. So I I think, you know, as I stated in our introduction, if you take a look at this, it's a it's a charming old building that is really being advanced very quite nicely in keeping with the neighborhood and the other structures around it. We are actually reducing the scale a little bit. We're reducing the floor area. We're making a lot of improvements. And as I said, when you take a look at the list of the number of variances, you really got to focus at how we are really improving the property and meeting all of the criteria that our planner went through. So we we're very excited about the project. We think it's a it's a wonderful renovation, and a very, done very carefully, insensitive, you know, in a sensitive manner, not only to the structure itself, but to the neighbors and the the neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to open up the hearing to the public for public comments. If you want to comment, please indicate that by raising your hand on the bottom of the panel. Mr. DeGresio, can you take that elevation down, please?
Absolutely. And I do that by telling Martha, please take it down.
Just so we can have more screen space here.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application? Claudia, you're muted. Claudia, you're muted.
One second, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you see me?
Hello, it's.
Yes. Be joining?
Gentlemen, are you both testifying together, or?
I think, I think I should go first. I'm the president of the homeowners association.
All right. Mr. Greve, you said you are the, are you the president of the Firestone? Do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Just my background, I am the president of the homeowners association, directly adjacent to this property. My background, I'm an engineer, structural engineer. I've actually worked with the SPRAB Advisory Board, Princeton Board. And we have some questions. We are immediately adjacent to this property. We are looking forward, actually, to the work that's going to be proposed by Princeton. It will be an improvement to a building that has really needed improvements. So this is actually a good thing. The idea, though, of working directly adjacent to our property, we have some concerns. For example, we don't know if there's going to be some underpinning in the foundation. And from my experience, that can be problems to our property. So I didn't hear anything about underpinning, increasing the depth of the basement, and we'd like to know if that's going to be part of this work. Should I ask questions one by one, or should I keep going?
I, I can answer that if we want to do this.
Why don't we do? Excuse me, why, why don't we get all the questions out there, and then we'll answer them? The, and. Okay, I'm fine with that as well. The other concern we have is we've been maintaining the property because there's been quite a long time that this property's been abandoned. We, we've actually hired Kale Nursery. We reconstructed the property perimeter with new vegetation brush. They call the Green Giant, and they are very, very helpful for us to have a visual barrier between our neighbors and our property. We have maintained the, the, the pavers. They're very quaint. They have this really an unusual view of how we look at our property. Our courtyard is, is like Williamsburg. Everyone says the brick is very, very Williamsburg-like, and then the pavers are like stone cobblestone, but they're not really, they're concrete pavers. And we really like that. So we propose that Princeton do not remove the end of the, the two-stall parking area, and keep that curb, which is Belgium block, and keep the pavers. And we do realize there's a problem with the drain. We have been working on our drains throughout the courtyard, and it's a very simple matter of digging down, fixing the piping if it's necessary, replacing pavers, and putting a concrete apron around that. So I think that they're saying that they're willing to consider that if the board will approve a variance because of the permeable permeable drainage right in that area. So I like that. We're all in agreement. This is a very good thing. The, let's see, damage to our property. Now, whenever there's construction, there's a possibility there's damage to our property. Our property is right next to this building. It's, as was shown in that drawing, we are one foot away from their foundation. What happens if there is damage to our property? Can, can we have a resolution that if there are damages, that our engineer, which will be me, can work with Princeton to resolve the repair, so that is equitable? Then lastly, we'd like to know who the, the point person that we can contact for coordination, because we have not heard anything except this letter that came out that is proposing this work just last week. And I would like to know who that point person is, so we can work together and understand how this, this work will be performed. They were using our courtyard, our driveway, and this is, this is a concern. Okay, I think, Mr. DeGresio, do you and your team want to respond to four questions?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll go in order just to keep it. Well, first of all, I'll, I'll start with an easy one. Martha, who's on the screen, is the person that you would contact. So she would be the person that we coordinate. And we, and we do envision being, you know, the university has a policy of being a good neighbor, and we do envision sitting down and working with you and discussing the concerns. Many of the topics that you've brought up really are more related to means and methods of construction, and not something that we typically have or discuss with the, the zoning board. But our, you know, intent is certainly to sit down with you or members of the Firestone Association, just to kind of discuss, you know, the next steps. Assuming that the board grants approval here, we will talk about, you know, those, those items. So let's, let's go to the very first question you asked about the underpinning. So I'll have our architect respond.
The simple answer is no. We are not underpinning at all. So.
Okay, thank you.
In other words, we're not lowering that basement. I think that was your concern. We are not.
Yes, exactly, because that tends to make problems with the soil condition around your foundation, and it can make damages. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, agreed.
And as I indicated at the beginning of, or somewhere along our testimony, we have no objection to keeping the parking spaces and curbing and plantings on our property the way they are today, so long as the board is comfortable with it. It sounds like the Firestone Association would like to keep that parking area the way it is. Now, to be clear, that's Princeton University property, and it's, you know, their, that section at least is their property, and they will, you know, use those parking spaces and, you know, maintain that area. But we certainly, you know, have no objection to keeping it the way it is, so long as this board grants the additional impervious coverage variance. And again, it's really a de minimis amount. We're talking fourteen square feet, right? It's less than, not even, it's, I was going to say less than one percent, but it's actually less than half of a percent. So, you know, when you do the percentage, so it's a very small amount. It's something that we would be happy to do as a good neighbor. And so that, that's our position. I don't know where the board falls on that. Let me see, what was some of the other questions?
Oh, last one, I believe, was damage to their property?
Again, you know, whenever there's construction, there, you know, a near property line, it's not really something that we would, we would get into with the zoning or planning board, but, I mean, we're clearly going to take care of any damage to a neighbor's property that our construction team, you know, does. So if, if we, you know, that's something that we will, you know, we can sit down and talk to you guys about it and, and how we want to go through that, and you could talk to our project manager. But, you know, honestly, if we're damaging another property, we're not going to run away and, and, you know, from it. We are going to take care of it.
Can I ask one more question? Yes. All right. We have planted vegetation around bushes around that property, and we took that on ourselves. It's capital improvement. Is it something that you are going to protect, as well as the, the portion of the adjacent property that we own? Are you going to protect the vegetation, the shrubbage that, that we feel is, is important?
So, you know, there's definitely a distinction between plantings on your property and your, the homeowners association property, and plantings on our property in terms of, you know, just in terms of looking at it. What I can say, Harold, is that I would probably recommend that we schedule some sort of site visit to go through and just to kind of address those, those issues. You know, we, if the board, and Martha's raising her hand, I'll let her speak, you know, and we'll have her speak in a second. You know, if, if the board so grants the variance for impervious allows us to keep that section where those, I want to call them arborvitae's are, you know, that, I, I'm not sure who planted those, but, you know, we have, you know, we could certainly maintain that and, and keep it in a, in a nice condition. But again, my recommendation is to kind of just walk the site. There are going to be some plantings on our property that may be impacted, and I can't, you know, go around and talk about what shrubs and what flowers. But I certainly think we can do it as, you know, together, you know, as a good neighbors in a, in a meeting. Martha, do you?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to suggest that we, in fact, do have a meeting to discuss logistics prior to construction. So when, when we go to have contractors bid on the project, the expectation of how, you know, protection to your property and how we are preventing damage is there for all the bidders to understand. So we don't come into a situation in, in which we start construction and there's no, nothing in place, you know, to prevent that damage from occurring.
Well, in my letter, I propose that Princeton protects their vegetation during construction at the Princeton University sites. And perhaps a similar courtesy protection can be implied in our, in our zone as well. There's a very strange, this is so tight. Our properties are so tight together. There's actually a little triangular.
They, they actually kind of crisscross like this, you know, they have a, yeah, it's very, it's very tight.
There's a triangular section that has vegetation, and we've been trimming it, and Princeton's been trimming it. But at the end of this construction, that's going to be gone. So there's, there's certain parts that we never really cared about, but that is going to have to be considered as well. But we really care about those, the vegetation that we planted next to our neighbors, because that's a visual barrier. So we really, really like that. Just in the instance of time, not that I don't want to allow you to speak. The university and, and yourselves have agreed to get together. Thank you. And, and I think that's important, so I, I can assume that you'll be able to work that out. I appreciate the time, and I understand you're all volunteers there. So, thank you. You're welcome. Claudia, do we have any other people who would like to speak? I think there was one other.
Yes, Matthew. I think it's Matthew.
Okay.
Yes, can you, can you see me?
Yes, we can see in here.
Very well. My name is Matt Petigee. I work with Harold as a neighbor of the Firestone community. I was not sure, technically speaking, if Harold would be able to speak up our concerns, which he did. So I don't have anything else to report, except the fact that we all agree that this beautification and renovation project is, is, is well-designed, and we are welcoming it in our community.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Claudia, anyone else indicated they'd like to speak? Claudia?
No more hands.
Good, thank you. Okay, so I will close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. DeGresio, would you like to sum up before we go into executive session? One thing, though, let me just ask the board. It is, in fact, ten fifty-six. We appear to be getting close to coming to a resolution of this case. Do you want to continue on, or do you want to carry it until next hearing? I, for one, think we're close enough that we should probably just move ahead and see how far we get for the next few minutes. I, I agree, Steve. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's keep going.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I really don't have much to say. I, I think this is a charming structure. I think we've put a lot of care into coming up with a, a really nice improvement and renovation. We're looking forward to working with the neighbors and, you know, if the board so grants to add that additional variance, our notice certainly is broad enough to include that catch-all. So we would, we would appreciate you considering that, since our neighbors feel very strongly about leaving the area as it is today. And by the way, it looks, it looks nice. We're talking about fourteen square feet.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no other questions of the applicant, the witnesses, by the board, let's go into executive session. Board members, questions, comments, motions? I, I'd just make the comment, I think this is a very well-thought-out improvement to what's there. I don't want to call what's there an eyesore, but this is clearly an improvement in my mind. And to the extent it's possible to deal, you know, with the constraints of the geometry of the, the lot, they've done their best. So I'm, I'm in favor of this. I would agree with, with George. I would say, though, we're a little close to eyesore than you think we are, but, but I think the, I think the architectural treatment of the existing building is very well-done, very well-thought-out. Any other comments? If not, if someone would like to make a motion? I, I will move that we accept the variances. Now, this additional variance that we're, they're asking for also, the pavers and the, that additional coverage? Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Second, anyone?
Seconds.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion at all, or? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Nice project.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, if we,
Right on your lap.
There's nothing else to discuss. It's eleven o'clock.
You did it right on eleven.
That's it. Perfect timing. We'll call it an evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Night.
Thanks, Steve. Night.
Nice project.
Night, yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, good night, Derek.
Hey, have a good night, Steve. Take care.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye.